To order. Do I got mic? Okay. A special meeting of the governing board of education is called to order. Thank you. The special meeting of the governing board of education is called to order by Dr. Joseph Komrosky at 7:34 PM on Tuesday, July 21, 2023, at the district office conference center, rooms A through C. Approval of the agenda. Are there any requests for changes to the agenda? I'll take a motion in a second to approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion in a second?
Can I ask why the order was switched?
Mic.
Okay, there. Okay. Just curious because the original agenda had TCI and then we added a second one, but the order was switched.
No particular reason.
Okay.
Do I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda? And Jan, you're, okay. Moved by Mrs. Wirsma.
Just a quick question.
Yeah, yeah.
I was kind of surprised when I got the notice about this meeting. I really didn't have any advance warning or information about what it was, so I'm kind of in the dark about what's going on. Second.
Second by Mr. Schwartz. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion adopted four zero. We're in open session. Attendance, governing board, Mrs. Allison Barclay. My, uh, Mr. Danny Gonzalez is absent. Dr. Joseph Komrosky, myself, Mr. Stephen Schwartz, Mrs. Jennifer Wirsma, secretary of the board. Okay, let me see. We'll just do, Dr. Kimberly Velez, interim superintendent, Mrs. Nicole Lash, assistant superintendent, businesses support services. And Mrs. Laney, Anna Sebar, executive assistant to the superintendent. If everybody could stand for the pledge of allegiance. If you've got hats on, take them over, um, take them off and put your hand over your heart, if you will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. Thank you. All right. We're onto public comments. There we go. How many, uh? Twenty-one on the first, twenty on the second. Mrs. Wirsma, twenty-one on the first, twenty on the second. So. Two minutes each. I'm fully with Mr. Schwartz. I'm recovering from the last meeting. What do you, what do you think, uh, Mrs. Wirsma?
Two minutes, he's fine.
Okay, two minutes and. Yep.
I mean, do we, do we want to do thirty minutes? Just thirty minutes for two?
Or do thirty minutes either way? Okay, let me see.
I would just ask if people are going to, um, present the same information that someone else has and you're satisfied with what they say that you skip? Otherwise, we do want to hear from everybody.
It's forty-two minutes to hear them all.
Okay.
All right, we'll hear them all. Uh, but let me, um, let me read off. Public comments are an important part of the board meeting and they are given careful consideration by the board. Public comment is restricted to items listed on the, um, meeting agenda or otherwise within the board's subject matter jurisdiction. All public comments will be limited to three minutes for a maximum total time of thirty minutes unless otherwise determined by the board. The board does not take any formal action on items during public comment or any item that has not been placed on the published agenda in accordance with the Brown Act. Public comment provide, provides members of the public with an opportunity to speak to the board accordingly. Public comments are to be directed to the board only and not to the audience in attendance or to individual audience members. Hate speech, obscenity, or other conduct during public comment that does or is likely to disrupt the board meeting from proceeding is prohibited. Similarly, conduct by audience members that does or is likely to disrupt public comments or any other aspect of the board meeting from proceeding is prohibited. Finally, pursuant to the Education Code Section 7054, public comment process should not be used to show, support for, or opposition to any ballot measure or candidate for election, including candidates for the election to this board. My rule is here, just to keep it going smoothly. If you get a yellow card, you're just being disruptive. If it's so egregious and you get a red, you're out on the first try. If you have hate speech up here, calling any of the board members and you can just imagine the names, we've seen it in the last meeting, you're out. I don't want to get about cards. I don't like doing that. I want everybody to act like an adult and let the board govern. Just let the board govern. That being said, we'll allow the first speaker up and.
First speaker is Tim Thompson, followed by Lisa Solomon.
Let's be respectful.
Two minutes.
Yeah, two minutes, two minutes.
I wanted to thank you all for hearing us tonight and I want, I have two things I would like to say.
Done. There we go. All right.
Two things I would like to say tonight. Number one is, uh, it was brought to my attention that after we've had three school board members run on the issue of parental rights, talking about how important it is to get the parents' involvement, we, we saw them look at the curriculum that we're talking about tonight and whether or not that curriculum would be adopted. And the main reason that I heard that that curriculum wasn't adopted was because we didn't have adequate parental involvement, which is what they ran on. And then I, I find out on social media through a PAC, a political action committee that was formed to go against the three parental rights board members, the PAC puts out information that over four hundred parents had been involved in this. So I have, I have a concern with that. I would like to know, number one is, are those four hundred plus parents real parents? Are these actual people that were involved? And if so, how is it that a political action committee formed to go against these three was given that information before the board members were given that information? So I think an investigation be launched into whoever it was that leaked that. If somebody did leak it, I think that disciplinary action should be taken against that person. Second thing is, I know you all saw the Chino Hills Board meeting last night. I would plead to this board to please do exactly what the majority did last night right here in Temecula Valley. Thank you.
Lisa Solomon, followed by Daniel Molina.
Hello. My name's Lisa. Today I stand before you with an urgent plea to safeguard the integrity of our local school board's politics and decisions. Our educational system is at a crucial crossroads and we must take a stand against the increasing interference, restrictions, and heavy-handedness imposed upon us by the state. Our local school boards are filled with passionate, knowledgeable educators, parents, and community members who understand the unique needs of our students. They possess firsthand knowledge of the challenges our schools face and have the wisdom to craft solutions tailored to our children's growth and well-being. Yet here we are, struggling against mounting interference from the state imposing a textbook that does not reflect the perspectives of our communities. We resist the heavy fines that drain resources meant for the very children that they claim to support. Today we unite to say no to the state's encroachment on our educational autonomy. We must reclaim our right to make decisions that benefit our children and communities. We must remain steadfast in our commitment to preserving the sanctity of our local school board politics and decisions. We must rise above the challenges, resist the interference, and defend the essence of our communities. The time has come to stand strong and resolute. We are sending a resounding message to Governor Gavin Newsom and all of those in the positions of authority. Stop interfering with our local governance. We will not be silenced. We will not back down. Our schools belong to us, the parents, educators, and residents who know them best. We refuse to be mere pawns in political games where the decisions are made in distant halls behind closed doors in Sacramento, disconnected from the very people they affect. Let us be clear to Governor Gavin Newsom and all who wish to impede our autonomy. We are the architects of our children's future. Our local school boards are the heartbeat of our communities and we will protect them fiercely from any attempt to weaken or undermine their authority.
Daniel Molina, followed by Jessica Tapia.
The schools informed us of this curriculum at the bottom of an email regarding school yearbooks. The schools simultaneously encouraged parents to purchase yearbooks early. These decisions were a subtle and manipulative approach to strip the voices of all parents in our community. How are we supposed to fight for our rights as parents at the state and federal level when the members of the board will allow it to be stripped in the schools that our tax dollars fund? Just like every other state, California rests under the blanket of constitution, constitutional direction, and the Supreme Court has already ruled on parental rights. Parents have a fundamental right to direct the care, the custody, and control of their children, and that right does not get taken away unless the parent is ruled unfit. The schools practice effective communication when they need money for school trips, when they need money for photos, money for school instruments, and when it's time to involve parents in curriculum decision-making, they haphazardly do so. Let me say it loud enough. Let me say it loud enough to echo through the halls of Sacramento. Support of this agenda is not denying students' education. It is not an attempt to ban anything. It is not even, it is not even the board making this decision. It is the demand of the parents who are the middle-class, hard-working citizens that work ten to twelve-hour shifts and can't be here every meeting. The demand of the parents who aren't fortunate enough to have the entire summer off and show up and organize and attack and demand, the demand of the little guy, the laborers, the small business owners, the people who can't exercise their voice because they are stifled from every angle. It's the stance of legal authority to properly supply all parents with ample time to effectively review the curriculum. We are simply requesting you that you provide us with the appropriate time to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Molina. Very passionate speaking there. I would just encourage people, try not to yell into the mic. It will create high blood pressure for everybody in the, I know we're passionate. Thank you. Just watch the volume. Thank you.
Next up is Jessica Tapia, followed by Jill Turpinski.
Be respectful of the speakers. Thank you, everybody.
Good evening, Temecula Valley School Board members. My name is Jessica Tapia. You may have heard my story, but I'll share a little bit of who I've become known as. I'm the teacher that was fired this year in January from a SoCal school district after I voiced to them that I would not lie to students by calling them by a gender or pronoun they are not. I would not lie to parents about that very pertinent information regarding their child's well-being, and I would not let biological males into the female locker room. These are all things I was being asked to do, and immediately I knew I had entered into some serious spiritual warfare. I put my job on the line by speaking out against these policies and I lost it. I had to look deep within and ask myself what I wanted to be able to say I had done.
This has to be related to the agenda item.
It's getting there.
It has to get there soon.
Can I jump to that part then?
Absolutely.
Okay, all of that to say, I go to war for what is good, right, and true, no matter who I'm up against. Now, my question is, will you? I believe you know in your heart what the right decision is here because you've already made it. Thank you for exposing evil when you found it. Now, don't let the devil fear you or convince you to go backwards. Proverbs 29:25 is a verse that helped me make the right decision when I had pressure from every angle to make the wrong one, so I want to share it. Fear of man, Gavin Newsom, will prove to be a snare, but whoever trusts in the Lord is kept safe. I pray that your fear of God gives you wisdom. You need to press onward in this. And let me testify, God does and will go out of His way to bless and protect those who choose to do what is good, right, and true for children. Thank you.
Jill Turpinski, followed by Cara Garcia.
To be clear, that wasn't related to the agenda item directly. If somebody's not going to relate their comments to the agenda item, adopting this social science curriculum, I'm going to have to gavel you, okay? That's how it's got to work for this meeting. I have to be fair. These are the Roberts Rules of Orders. It's got to be related to the curriculum.
All right, well, I don't think anybody expected to be here on a Friday night, but apparently Satan and Jezebel came out to play here, so. So, so I didn't.
Order.
I didn't call anyone a name. And since we were born for such a time as this, here we go. I didn't get much sleep last night between the excitement going on in Chino Valley, followed by the mass confusion happening here. With that said, I would like to take this time to address some questions and concerns that I have. What changed in twenty-four to forty-eight hours that warranted this quick turnaround for this meeting? Where did Gavin Newsom and the governor's office get the data they represented in the pie chart that was published on Wednesday following Tuesday's governing board meeting? Where did the mysterious four hundred new survey results come from? And if the district had them all along, why were they not presented prior to now and utilized as part of the previous conversations on this topic? Why and how did the one Temecula Valley PAC have access to that information prior to anyone else? You all, we all, are being played. This reeks of foul play. It reeks of slimy backroom political dealings. If you are going to present yourselves as transparent and the voice of parents, then parents must be part of the process. By choosing to adopt this curriculum now, we just, because the district secretly, mysteriously found four hundred survey responses which were most likely manufactured, you are doing the exact opposite of what you vowed to do. You will be disenfranchising the parents that voted for you and have supported you, especially those who are waking up to this and activated to be involved in the process moving forward. They deserve to be a part of the process, just like each of you has mentioned on numerous occasions. And aside from not honoring your vow to the parents of this community, you will also be going back on your bold, strong word against the tyranny of our governor just a few short days ago. Right here in this room, we were doubling down, but now we're bending a knee. This will send a clear message to Gavin Newsom.
Cara Garcia, followed by Melissa H.
My eighty-year-old retired high school English teacher father often reminds me that William Shakespeare's words are still relevant today. Over four hundred years ago, Shakespeare wrote in Hamlet, "Brevity is the soul of wit." With that in mind, I proceed as a parent and a teacher with TV USD for twenty-three years. Now we have this sudden influx of four hundred surveys that all somehow support adopting this liberal ideologically-based curriculum? I respect their opinion, though I diametrically oppose it. In the last general election, the majority of voters endorsed and the current school board members in opposition to those backing this new curriculum. It's quite simple. The people have spoken. Allow the democratic process to work. And to the new board members, maintain the courage of your convictions.
Melissa H., followed by Jean Femia. It says Melissa H.
Good evening, board. I just want you to know, this is not something I do. I now feel like I have no choice but to stand up here and voice my opinion. I am not for this curriculum. Those polls are lies, and those however many people that magically appeared to prove this curriculum is also a lie. I tried to view this curriculum and it wasn't, it was impossible. You had to jump through hoops just to view it online. With these, with today's technology, why couldn't you just push a link and get the material? But you couldn't. I want to encourage this board to stay on the, stay on the course that was voted on and go with the non-TCI option on the agenda. I am wondering and honestly asking, are you falling for Newsom and Tony Thurman's? They have no authority, legal right, to attack us for not approving curriculum that we do not want. They are betting on the passing of AB 1078. And I'm sorry, but if AB 1078 passes, we parents are in trouble. The state government will try to take our kids from us and we won't have a say. This is the hill I will die on. And if anyone thinks they will interfere with my parental rights, they have another thing coming. It's not a threat, it's a promise. And I'm talking to you, Gavin Newsom, and to you, Tony.
If you want me to clear the auditorium, my role.
Leave our kids alone, so help me God.
I'm going to remind the audience of something. This is not your board meeting. It is our board meeting. If you want me to clear the room, I will. I'm not joking around. Don't test me tonight.
Jean Femia, followed by Greg Langworthy.
You can all stay out in the parking lot. If you want to watch the meeting from out there, we offer equitable services online. Do not interrupt these speakers. Let them speak. Let me do the governing board job of using the gavel. You want to sit there and heckle? The whole section's going to get cleared.
Good evening. It's good to see you all again. It's been so long. I'm not, not close enough? Okay. Seriously, though, I'm glad you called this special meeting, as the meeting on Tuesday ended without giving district staff the direction that they needed with regard to the social studies curriculum for one through five. So tonight you're presented with two choices. First, keeping the same curriculum we've had for many years, but purchasing more textbooks and adding an online portion. Or second, approving the TCI curriculum, which our own elementary school teachers chose and piloted, but without allowing students access to the online resources and with the additional caveat that the fourth grade, Unit 12, undergo changes so that it does not include, quote, "sexualized topics of instruction," unquote. The cost of the first choice for just this year is about $274,000, but those materials remain outdated, and choosing this option doesn't really move us ahead for the future. The addition of the online portion is a new wrinkle, and I'm wondering, what is in those online resources? Have staff and parents had a chance to review them? And if so, what did they think? The second choice at least moves us ahead, but I understand that the lack of online resources is problematic for special ed and English learners, so that's unfortunate. The other issue with this choice as presented is the extra review of the fourth grade materials. I still have not heard any rational criticism of these materials despite all the talk about sex on Tuesday, so this feels like another waste of time. Honestly, I haven't heard that much talk about sex since my kids were teenagers, or maybe since, or maybe since I was a teenager. To me, what makes sense is to approve the entire TCI curriculum or text, with textbooks, workbooks, and the online resources that was vetted by forty-seven of our own teachers, piloted with thirteen hundred students, and reviewed by parents. You can amend the second item to do just that, and I urge you to do so without any more delay. Thank you.
Greg Langworthy, followed by Julie Gary.
Good evening, board. Just want to talk about a couple of things and the progress that I think you may not even be aware that you've made in these meetings. First, you're investigating. That's what you're supposed to do. That's oversight. And Allison, even I appreciate you because you make Danny make his arguments. You keep questioning him and he's got to prove that what he's saying is right. So I appreciate that. And you do the same thing, Stephen, so I appreciate your back and forth. But here's the progress I think you've made. Joseph crafting a vision statement for the school. I think that's key. Can't choose a curriculum unless you know where you're heading as a school, so I think that has to be job one. Second, the, the suggestion that Danny made, establishing a parental advisory board. Well, we kind of did a ad hoc thing like that in Marietta, evaluating their history textbook. We had a group of us get together, spent a lot of time in that history book. It wasn't easy. You know, Joseph, you said that you didn't catch the things in the curriculum that Danny caught. We caught a lot of stuff that, that the school board didn't catch. Took a lot of time, a lot of investigation. So I think that is a great idea, and I think that's the next step. You know, a vision statement and a parental advisory board, digging into that curriculum, making sure we really know the good and the bad of it, and before making the decision of 1.6 million, doing your due diligence. And I think that would get the whole community behind you. You didn't make a quick decision. You made a thorough determination. You had discussion with parents and teachers after a thorough investigation, and I think that would be a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Julie Gary, followed by Bernard Bundy.
Hi, I'm Julie Gary, and I'm actually a resident in Temecula. Jen's adoption of using the old materials is a Band-Aid that will cost the district hundreds of thousands of dollars needlessly. The district will still have to adopt new curriculum that adheres to the California framework and state standards. So we're just going to go back and forth and are we just going to do this every week till infinity? Another thing is she, at the eleventh hour yesterday, put in these online resources that were not vetted by any TV USD, TV USD parents. Jen ran on a platform of parental rights, yet she is taking the voice away of every parent in the district. She is saying that she knows what's right for every single child without allowing any single parent to look at that curriculum before it's out in the schools. Teachers use these resources during COVID, and many of them have told me that they were subpar. They were not rigorous. They weren't engaging. Students did not love them. But parents have vetted TCI. A few months ago, the district opened up the public survey to only TV USD parents, where they had to have an email that was in the system. So these weren't outsiders. I don't have kids in the district, so I couldn't do the survey. And over four hundred parents responded, and they, we haven't been able to see the results and I don't.
Bernard Bundy, followed by Mick Florio.
Good evening. Talking about what is taught in public schools today, a little history. Would it matter that it was a Supreme Court justice named Hugo Black, a former member of the Ku Klux Klan and hater of the Catholic Church, who in 1947 led the way in giving us the misinterpretation of Thomas Jefferson's letter to the Danbury Baptist, resulting in what has been called.
This has to be related to the curriculum. This has to be related to the curriculum agenda item. These public comments have to be related to the curriculum.
Okay, all right. Well.
These can't be open public comments.
All I'm going to say then, make it short, is that I can recall when there were no restrictions. I'm old enough, no restrictions against the Bible in public schools. We had neither drugs or alcohol and sex and fights in school grounds.
So this has got to be related to the curriculum or you have to concede your time.
All right, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Mick Florio, followed by Kenny H.
To be clear, that's how the special meeting works, audience. It has to be very specific to the agenda items. This isn't a normal board meeting where you can do public comments about anything. It has to relate to the curriculum item. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So this is curriculum-based. California, we heard the other day, wasn't ranked very high in the education level, and we heard all of the screams from the teachers saying, "Not Temecula, not Temecula, not Temecula." Well, I researched that because I wanted to see exactly where Temecula stood. According to U.S. News, which is not a bastion of conservatism, our students coming out of high school are sixty-five percent proficient in English, so I'd give the teachers a D on that one. So I'd give the teachers a D on that one. They're 34% proficient in math. I'll give them an F on that one. We have an 85.3% graduation rate. If I was part of that 15% of parents who had kids that went to school for four years and didn't graduate, I would be extremely upset. Extremely upset. So while we're pushing grooming and pedophilia on over here. We need to be talking about.
Sir, you got to concede your time. This is not related to this curriculum.
Yes, we, we need to teach reading, writing, and arithmetic because the teachers are failing. And we as parents need to be on that. So.
You have to concede your time, sir.
Alright, I'll retard myself on this one, but the ones that they call outside agitators, they were all in Chino last night getting thrown out.
Thank you, sir.
Kenny H, followed by Stephanie Dawson.
Let me be clear, everybody. The curriculum we're talking about on this first agenda item is the curriculum that is currently being used in TV USD district. And that's what we're talking about, okay? Can't be a general discussion, I'm going to gavel you.
Well, this is referred to TCI. "The education of all children from the moment they can get along without their mother's care shall be in the state's institutions." "Education is free. Freedom of education shall be enjoyed under the condition fixed by law and under the supreme control of the state." Two different quotes from two different books, same, by the same man, Karl Marx. Gavin Newsom just said, "We will purchase this book," this is TCI-related, "after your brave decision on Tuesday."
Sir, what I'll have you do is concede your time, but do comments on the second agenda item, TCI-related, right? You'll get your full two minutes, but it's got to go there, yeah. Because this is not TCI-related. This is the first curriculum that we're currently using in the school district.
Stephanie, oh, sorry, Joseph. Stephanie Dawson, followed by Dawn McClellan.
Just in case you have a TCI-related comment, it's on the second agenda item. We're on the first. We currently have in our district.
Hello. I have a few questions. I know it's been asked, but to start, I'm wondering why the parental feedback of 400 appeared. At the last board meeting just this Tuesday, that amount did not exist. I'm speaking.
I'm the one with the gavel. You want me to clear the auditorium? I will. That's it. Thank you.
At the last board meeting just this Tuesday, that amount did not exist. Come Wednesday, the input appears out of nowhere and somehow the one Temecula Valley PAC seems to have acquired the knowledge of the parental input existing before even the board was aware? Who withheld this information prior to Tuesday's meeting? Who would have been in charge of this information to begin with? Ms. Valdez, that, is that something that falls on your plate? Next, Newsom calls, quote, "98.8% of parents and educators," or I'm sorry, Newsom claims, "98.8% of educators and parents support or are impartial to adopting the updated social studies curriculum." Who was polled? Newsom, you continue to lie and mislead all you want, but we, the parents, aren't falling for it. As a concerned parent who was not polled in the 98.8% stat that Newsom claims, I can tell you and I, I could tell you many others firmly oppose this curriculum. Lastly, is the board aware that this curriculum contains elements of CRT? CRT was officially banned in our district as of December. On those grounds alone, this curriculum should not be approved in our district. I urge you to look into that before you make any rash moves tonight. Board members, all eyes are on you at this moment. I was at the Chino School District meeting last night where a historical parent, pro-parent resolution was passed. And I can tell you, the parent movement is alive and very well. Parents and community members from all walks of life and cultures are saying no more. To finish, I'd like to quote Congressman Darrell Issa. "I stand with the parents of Temecula. The school board is doing right by listening to concerned parents and educators and trying to work together to appropriately curate the studies that will be presented to the youngest of students. This has displeased Governor Newsom, who has taken the social media to mock Temecula, threaten its school district, and misrepresent the facts. His publicity stunts and campaign of misinformation are unworthy of the high."
Dawn, followed by Alex Dubos. Okay, Alex Dubos.
As a concerned TV USD parent, I'm here once again to express my frustration with the leadership choices of this board majority that bring us here for the second time in three days to discuss a curriculum required by law that you still haven't approved. The state's $1.5 million fine in response to your choice to violate state law is not just a financial penalty for our district. It's a stark reminder of the wasted resources our schools and our children are going to have to continue to endure in the service of some outside agenda. These meetings have indeed become clown factories. We've got 11th hour meetings like this one, we've got ever-changing agendas, we've got erratic decision-making, not transparent. School starts in three weeks and we need to hold an emergency meeting on a Friday night because you haven't figured out a curriculum. Just to be here, parents like me have to wait in line for hours and navigate a maze of armed security guards and police due to the presence of outside agitators that Jen has given a weekly open invitation to. Your campaigns promised increased parent involvement in our kids' education, which for the record, I completely agree with. And instead, Dr. K, your recurring guest on Our Watch with Tim Thompson, will you ignore questions and feedback from hundreds of parents like me who live in your trusty zone? You have the power and you have the responsibility to restore sanity to these meetings. So here's some non-controversial proposals to help get started. First, set up a quarterly town hall forum exclusively for TV USD parents. Before you claim to act on our behalf. Second, require speakers at future school board meetings to identify whether they're in fact TV USD residents or teachers.
Sir, you're going to concede your time? This is not curriculum-related. Thank you. Your time's done. That's it.
Suzie Stock.
I truly appreciate hearing from everybody, so does the board, but if you're not relating this to curriculum, you're just going to get gavelled. I hate doing it.
Suzie, followed by Annalisa.
Is it okay if I speak at both and just, I put in a slip for both? Okay. Good evening, my name is Suzie Stock and I'm a veteran science teacher and a parent to two TV USD students. Spending $320,000 of taxpayers' money to buy outdated textbooks that do not align with the framework are a short-term solution and is not fiscally responsible. You have already wasted $500,000 in buying out Dr. McClay's contract since her firing was without cause, hiring an interim and searching for a new one. Every time you spend money out of the general fund, it means other things must be cut. If we refine $1.5 million, programs and supplies will be cut. You are breaking the law and there are consequences when you break the law. Please do not make the students of this district pay for your mistakes. We've been here before and this agenda item was added last minute by Mrs. Weirzmet. So we are left once again to guess your intentions. Please do not play chicken with the state of California with taxpayers' funds. The TCI adoption that was vetted, piloted, and reviewed by all stakeholders needs to be adopted tonight. I'll cover that later. I'm heartbroken by the disrespect and the demonization my fellow, my fellow teachers have had experienced, being called everything from a groomer to a Marxist with a liberal agenda set to indoctrinate your children. Please stop supporting this false narrative and set the record straight. Our elementary teachers are amazing, professional, and caring people who have dedicated their careers to serving the children and the families of this community. You have robbed them of their time, their mental health, and the respect they deserve. I urge you to adopt the TCI curriculum info. Again, I'll cover that again. Please get back to the business of our school board.
Annalisa, followed by Christine.
Good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak tonight. Tonight is extremely important for so many reasons. As I was getting ready for this meeting tonight, I happened to glance at my calendar and I realized that students are back in school in 24 days. That doesn't give us a lot of time to do what we need to do. I'm urging you to choose a curriculum tonight. The last few months have been really, really hard on everyone, our parents, our teachers, our communities, and on you. But I think there's more to celebrate here than to look at the differences. We are all here because we believe in public education. We're all here because we believe that students matter. In some ways, you can compare the relationship that we all share to a bit of a blended family. Just like a blended family, we have some new leadership and we have some growing pains. But the growing pains can be overcome if we all begin to respect and work together. Rarely does a new step-family work well in a pressure cooker. I would recommend that in the future, we take more of a crock pot approach. School districts do really well when they understand that time and low heat make for an effective combination. If each of us is an ingredient, what kind would we be? Would you be a carrot, which is slow to cook and blend with others? Would you be a pea that mushes together very quickly with other ingredients around you? Would you be the meat bringing in the substance? Or would you be the pepper and the onion bringing in the spice? It really doesn't matter what kind of ingredient we are. What matters is that we make a decision tonight and that we bring peace and order back to our community. Our children deserve it. They need to see us acting like adults, dial down the heat, put away the Instapot, bring back the crock pot, so that in the future, when we have other things that we need to solve to.
Audience, let's try to be respectful of the speakers. There's a lot of chatter in the background. Just quiet. Let the speakers have the floor.
Christine Massa, followed by Jennifer Bach.
Thank you, Temecula resident and TV USD parent of three. I came to an interesting realization after Tuesday's meeting as I was talking about this curriculum matter with my nearly 20-year-old registered voter son. Yes, he voted for you. And it wasn't clicking for him why this curriculum madam was a big, curriculum matter was a big deal until I told him, "Honey, these kids are using the same text that you used when you were at Isabel Barnett, you know, 13 years ago? Don't you think a lot's happened in the world in 13 years?" And now he understands. I mean, what were you all doing 13 years ago or 17 years ago when these books were published? Are you the same people? Is your world the same? Even a 2019 update is still outdated. So much has happened. We've had a global pandemic, an insurrection, and the devastating moves of the Supreme. Can you pause my time? Thank you.
Sure, yeah. We could even add five seconds. I'm telling you right now, audience, you're going out to the parking lot, you're testing my patience, and it's running very, very thin. I'm telling you right now, do you want to be in the parking lot or do you want to remain quiet and act like adults, all of you? Thank you.
Thank you. And the devastating moves of the Supreme Court. Additionally, this program has not been piloted by teachers nor has it received parental feedback, so it's completely out of line with how you said you'd like curriculum approval to be. Are you going to be consistent? Are you going to twist your decisions to fit your political agenda? Why would the district, district throw away $250,000 on a temporary, untested solution? I urge you to deny the proliferation of the Forstmann curriculum. The curriculum is not supported by a community of actual TV, TV USD parents, just by independent homeschoolers, charter families, and people from Glendale or LA or San Diego. Why are you listening to outside voices instead of the voices of people who actually have skin in this game? This is a community who chooses to send their children to public schools to have broad exposure and if they practice religion like my family does, we practice it in the home and at our church. We use facts and data to support our decisions and not rumor, propaganda, or hyperbole. Show our students and our staff that you are leaders capable of making inclusive decisions that are in the best interests of all students. Thank you.
Jennifer, followed by Andrew Latona.
Hello. I have concerns about both plans being action items this evening. There's conflicting information on what the plan is for the curriculum. There's a few rumors about mixing old and new curriculum and not using the full new curriculum to its full advantage, which seems less than ideal, expensive, and counterproductive. What I ask is that you vote for what is feasible, reasonable, and responsible. And by that, I mean let us not pay for curriculum and then not use it. Let us not pour a quarter of a million dollars into old books. I would like to have the kids have updated material and all the features that go with it. But I, I see your concerns about morality and I think that there are appropriate and feasible ways to address your concerns that I think most people can get behind. And there are simpler actions that can reduce violations, fighting, expenses, and the work that will be needed to get to a productive end result. We can start by acknowledging that there are morality concerns and social issues that violate values and common religious rules and beliefs of the local population. And then you can address those concerns through implementation of policies and procedures that allow for reasonable accommodations and modifications to curriculum to avoid and prevent moral injury. Doing so seems well within the authority of the school board, addresses parental concerns, and not only addresses the issue with this curriculum, but can be applied to other curricula as well and materials and books. It costs less, it shows authority, leadership, responsiveness, and allows for the problems to be addressed firsthand and immediately rather than kicking the can down the road through long curriculum review and ongoing battles back and forth between one side and another and all in between. There is a letter signed by a board member that's posted online that reads, "I support teaching all history in its entirety. Me too." The letter ends with "Common sense must."
Andrew Latona, followed by Kay Wallace. Up first is Andrew Latona.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Andrew. I'm a proud father of four boys that attend Nicholas Valley, Day Middle School, and Chaparral. I am so thankful for the teachers and the staff at Temecula Valley School District. I used to live in Orange County.
Sir, this meeting is, if you address the audience, you're going to concede your time.
Okay, I'm just thanking them. I moved from Orange County, from the hood of Orange County to Temecula so my kids could have a better future. I commuted five hours a day. I would tell my colleagues, "Why do I live in Temecula? Because I'm getting a public, my kids are getting a private education from a public school." And all of that has changed. At this point, I'm just a parent. I work nine to five, I don't have time. I really, this is my first time here, I'm shaking in my boots. All I'm letting you know is, we need to stop. I want my kids to have a better future. That's why I sacrifice. And the, the book is 17 years old. A lot has changed in 17 years. Come on, let's, let's think, let's common sense. And look, we all want the best for our children. We all make the sacrifices. And sometimes we don't agree, but we can't put our kids' future in line. All I'm asking is, please, vote for the new book. I'm asking, like, we need to start healing. A lot has gone on and, you know, we all care. I love Temecula, it's my adopted town. And I'm just asking, please, not just for me, but for my kids. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Kay Wallace, followed by Edgar Diaz.
Good evening. All of our students need representation and when supported through inclusive textbooks, we can accomplish this. Students need to see themselves in what they read so they can make connections, which is the only way they can fully learn. As a taxpayer and parent of a current TV USD student, I am appalled. They're no longer surprised to witness the three of you putting your personal, political, and religious agendas ahead of the needs of our students in our community. As a person of the Jewish faith and minority faith here in the Temecula Valley, I'm appalled but not surprised that you called a board meeting on our Sabbath. If we included this information in textbooks, we could bring about awareness, understanding, and empathy in our community. I don't want to make this about religion because we already hear so much of yours. However, you were elected, for now, to represent and support all of the voices in this district, all of them, not just the members of your community. This can be accomplished through. This can be accomplished through textbooks and show of all history. This has never been about Democrat versus Republican. This is about standing up for what is right and speaking about injustice and fraud. Stop wasting money and time and start focusing on what you were elected to do.
Edgar Diaz, followed by Kenneth P. Edgar Diaz, followed by Kenneth P.
Buenas tardes, staff, board members. For Friday, thank you for coming and being here and putting this meeting together. I'm glad to have participated in the most-attended July board meetings in all of memory. July meetings are usually quiet and business-related to keeping the district functioning, and this is one of those times. TBA, by the way, I'm Temecula Valley Educator Association President, is happy to see this agenda item return and realize you recognize the importance and urgency as it has now been part of the board business for three months and six meetings and on a Friday night. I am hopeful that what needs the most attention for starting the instructional year for students is resolved tonight, instructional resources for students and teachers. We are three weeks away from teachers reporting back, opening classrooms, and preparing to implement their instructional timeline. Teachers need materials to organize the academic year, and students need textbooks to learn. As of now, we don't have anything in place that meets state frameworks and standards, and that is a fact. It is not misinformation. Also not misinformation or robots are the second round of parent feedback collected between May and June for this adoption. I will project my hope and send out our early appreciation to the individuals from the warehouse, library techs, and anyone who has a hand in processing the materials to reach classrooms at the most urgent timeline. It will not be easy to split duties with providing instructional duties at sites and barcode and enter and distribute materials to classrooms, but I'm sure overtime will be provided to the staff for their increased work expectations. I have no doubt that the teachers of TVUSD will create their magic to teach the appropriate content for their grade level, even when receiving the materials late to plan the year. That is what they do. They pride themselves on their ability to assist students to reach academic goals. As you may know, most of our work as a teacher is not teaching a subject. It's helping students believe that the class environment is a safe space to take enough risks to reach for success as students encounter failure. My hope extends to you as governing board members that you arrive at a common sense solution that provides materials for students to succeed.
Kenneth, followed by Lori Trask.
Good evening, board, parents, Temecula community. These past few months, parents from all the surrounding Inland Empire school boards stood up to defend their children from curriculum that is uniquely formulated to bring more division and confusion amongst their children. Educational curriculum can be manipulated to look like a beautiful rose, but the closer you get into the rose garden, the more pain and hurt is inflicted on you due to its thorns. All the parents here tonight have come together in the name of defending their children and their parental rights. Books filled with division can only last so long because division is eventually exposed and loses its stronghold on young minds. And I will end with this. Italian Prime Minister Giorgia Maloney stated, "Why is the family an enemy? Why is the family so frightening?" There's a single answer to all those questions, because it defines us, because it is our identity, because everything that defines us is now an enemy for those who would like us to no longer have an identity and to simply be perfect consumer slaves. And so they attack national identity, they attack religious identity, they attack gender identity, and they attack family identity. No. I must be citizen X, gender X, parent one, parent two. I must be a number. Because when I am only a number, when I no longer have an identity or roots, then I will be the perfect slave at the mercy of financial speculators. The perfect consumer. We will defend it. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Last comment. Oh, no, sorry. Lori Trask, followed by Lisa Dishbrow.
Good evening. I am actually just wanting to ask a couple of questions. They have been asked, but I wanted to just say as a resident here in Temecula that I have the same concerns, the same questions. I'm curious to know who held that information back? If it was done in May and June, which has been asserted? Like, why was that not shown until Wednesday, after the vote happened? Who held that back? And if somebody did it on purpose, it'd be really good to know that and to have consequences for that. The other question I have is, in regards to the curriculum, I'd like to express, I would like to see it go through, as it was voted on Tuesday, as well as just to wait. This is contentious. Like, why not wait one year and just look through it again, taking the time to see what else is there? However, the question I'm wondering is, why is Gavin-
Audience, be respectful.
Thank you. Why is Gavin Newsom so set on this curriculum coming into our school district when parents want it? It's a question I'm curious about. There's other curriculums, but why is it this specific one? And so those are questions I want to throw out to you as a board. Maybe you've already thought of them, maybe you haven't. But as a citizen, I'm concerned. I'm concerned that there's going to be a switch, a possible switch tonight, that would take what happened on Tuesday night and switch it to something else that a majority of parents that specifically were here on Tuesday did not want to see happen. And so, questions again, I'm just asking, I'm throwing them out there. I want to be a critical thinker. I want to think through this process, and I want to wonder and ask. And I don't think that's a bad thing for us as a society to do. So thank you very much.
Okay, last comment, Lisa Dishbrow, for action item number one.
You may need to stop me. I don't know if I listed my concern in the proper section. So I'm just being honest. This is a different arrangement tonight. I'm a California-certified public school teacher, and I come from the Bay Area, San Francisco Bay Area. One of the things that I want to speak to you about is that I've spoken to both Tracy Henderson and Jennifer Kennedy today, both attorneys. And they repeated that you are authorized to stand on your previous decision. The threats from Sacramento are clearly threats. Am I off topic?
Yeah, it's got to be related to the curriculum, ma'am. It's got to be related to the curriculum we are currently using in the schools. Your time's running down. Just letting you know.
Okay, I see my time. Thank you. In terms of the curriculum, it is time for you to reflect the values of the people that elected you to the current board. The family values of Californians are under attack, and the-
All right, ma'am, you have to concede your time. Thank you so much.
But I'm addressing the curric-
This, ma'am, you have to concede your time. I'm sorry. This is curriculum-based. Thank you. Ma'am? Ma'am, your time's over. I'm sorry. Okay, that's it for the public comments, and I thank you. It was a little painful because the audience kept on interrupting, but we're moving right along. Do we have a motion and a second? Sorry. Mrs. Wirsma, do you want to discuss current elementary social sciences currently being used in the school? And you're on mute. Yep.
Hi, yes. I would like to explain a couple of things, and I just want to thank all of you for coming out. You're right, Friday night, after a 10-hour on Tuesday, is super tough. And I just want to let you know that I think that scheduling a meeting tonight out of angst and bully tactics from the governor on down through the ranks doesn't make for good governance. So I just want to clearly communicate that, that this was a tough thing. And the majority of the board members did make a decision on Tuesday, this past Tuesday, to bypass TCI and to adhere to the curriculum we have because we heard the community. What apparently happened is that because we were at the end of a 10-hour tour, that in the end wasn't facilitated. And I chalk it up to a couple of things. One, as new school board members, we often have a hose, so that was tough. Two, we didn't have the leadership facilitating that for us. And that kind of exemplifies this whole entire process and how it's gone down. And I'm going to speak some truth to that. It should have been facilitated, that we voted to hang-
Order. If I can't hear, I'm going to clear the audience. Mrs. Wirsma? Mrs. Wirsma, give me a second.
Yeah.
If I can't hear, I'm going to clear you. Jose, is there any way you can raise up the volume as well? Thank you. All right. We got to-
Can you hear me now?
This board member, yes.
Okay. So I want to explain a little bit, can you hear me, about the work that I did this past week. And I did it because many of you know I've had skin in the game from the very beginning with this. And I wanted to hear our parents, and I've had a heart for having something in the valley that's competitive. We have a lot of private schools, charter schools, pods, homeschooling situations, which is great. But we want to be competitive with the public school. And what I figured out, that should have been brought to me as a possible solution prior, is that the publisher that we have right now has an online accommodating resource, and it provides access to the same content and curriculum that's Fair Act compliant. It contains the state standards and framework, and it meets the needs of our EL and special education students, which was really important to us. Now, these are consumable books, and yes, they're older. But when we chose to look at curriculum, for me, it was making sure it was history, not social issues so much as history with components of civics and geography. And interestingly, in this category, sometimes I think some of the oldies are the goodies. And so I looked at this resource and the amazing job we've done with our students in this district and saw that with an accommodating resource, not a brand-new, adopted curriculum, we could then, with a 2019 stamp, take care of all the things that we needed to. So that supplement wouldn't be a new adoption process. It can be viewed as fiscally wise at about, I think, $2.75. It's a short-term fix because we know we have to go for the long-term solution. And I'm fully aware of that. So this is an auxiliary item that in doing the research, I felt we could have added long ago in a consent list to support our special learners, our special need, and our English learners. The thing that bothers me the most about this is that there was not a genuine and transparent process. And I really, I really thought this could be the option to slow the roll prior to a $1.6 million long-term adoption, which you do want to work through things. And so, at this point, here's what I feel. This has been a barnstormer of manipulation and collusion, okay? So when the surveys came up and were presented by Dr. Velez after the meeting Tuesday, and as you heard, it was seemingly leaked to activists on Facebook and then somehow shot up to the governor's office, people were concerned, and we questioned the entirety of the process. So honestly, there has been a clear lack of honesty. And I mean, it's not professional. It's a dereliction in duty. And I think that coupled with the fact that we saw mid-spring all of the disinformation and the scare tactics for the parents, there was never that internal collaboration soon enough. And I think we've learned from that. But that's led to why we're here today. And I have gone the extra mile every time to figure out what can we do? We hear that we need to be compliant. We hear the fact that our students need these materials. And what I did when I made this call is found, I found out we could get the consumable books that we need in the next two and a half weeks. Box checked. The online component, which could be pretty much instantaneous, would take care of what we need there, too. The bummer is that because this was called so soon, I feel like we needed another four or five days to get the publisher here, to have that, to be able to show and walk people through it. But make no mistake, it doesn't need to be piloted. It is an augmented resource that complements what we have. So I feel like there's been sabotage. I really do. And that, to me, means a lot for the families here in this community. We should not be kowtowing to a governor or people who have stepped outside their line of authority. It doesn't mean I don't love our teachers. Hear me. I do love you. I appreciate you. I feel like there's been a clash, and it's unfortunate.
Mrs. Wirsma, give me one second.
It's come from the top down. But at this point, that is why this proposal ended up on here. Because, like I said, I've worked hard to try to accommodate. Parents, what can we do to have honest, transparent, real feedback that makes a difference? I know one mom mentioned the fact that she's Jewish. Well, I've had another mom say there's anti-Semitic material in this, one of the books, that she didn't like. And so in having a pause and giving it extra time, those are the things I wanted to work out in a committee, talking to parents, not just seeing a nebulous survey that we wonder how they appeared in the 12-hour. It just doesn't feel right. And so I want you to know, I really wanted to hear everybody. I think it's important to collaborate and put some things behind us, and I'm committed, as a district, to do that. But I'm also committed to truth and sharing very honestly with you what I've seen. And I do think people need to be called out. And if there is a leak, going to activist groups and up to the governor and out to the superintendent of ed, we're not working together as a district. So that's what I wanted to share about this and why I really felt like we should look at it in order to give more time and to slow the roll and do our due diligence and hear what we need to hear before moving forward for an eight- or nine-year adoption that's over $1,000,000.6. So that is what I have to share.
Thank you, Mrs. Wirsma. Okay. I'm going to yield the floor to Mrs. Barclay, and then we'll hear from Mr. Schwartz. Everybody?
Great. I would love to take the floor and clear up some of your questions, Jen. So first of all, as far as the survey goes, Dr. Velez, when we received a letter from the Attorney General's office asking for us to submit information regarding the TCI curriculum, were they sent the survey results?
They were. It was one of the requests, Ms. Barclay, from the Attorney General's office.
So would that have been how the governor? Most likely. I mean, I haven't talked to the governor or the Attorney General, but most likely that would be how the governor received those results.
That is correct.
Awesome. So, secondly, in addition, it's my understanding that Mr. Gonzalez, he's not here to talk, so I'm just relaying information that I have, and he can speak to this at a later time if he'd like to, had a meeting scheduled with our previous superintendent to discuss those results on June 2nd, which he did not attend. And then she was subsequently terminated without cause very shortly after. So my understanding, I didn't request the results of the survey because that was Mr. Gonzalez, you know, thing that he was interested in. I was satisfied with what we had heard from teachers and the parents who had emailed me. But to me, it would seem like that's where the problem was, is that there was a lack of communication because that was supposed to happen through Mr. Gonzalez and our previous superintendent. So as far as collusion, leaking, none of that happened, in my view. There were no survey results posted, just the graph. And all of us, we did receive the survey results. And so we do know that they were attached to real parents in this district. And I heard from lots of people who filled out the survey, so I felt pretty confident about the results. So I don't think there was any collusion as far as that goes. So just speaking to that.
And Ms. Barclay, can I add something to that, please?
Oh, please, yes, sorry.
I just want to be clear that on March 27th, we added a curriculum adoption information to our district website about the proposed elementary school of social science curriculum under the Required Public Notice Meetings and Information section. We also displayed this information for public review in the lobby of the district office. Then on April 19th, we added additional information to every school, every elementary school's website, informing the public about the materials available for review. On April 21st, teachers who were involved in the pilot sent out a Google feedback form to all of their parents of their students, asking for feedback on the instructional materials their students had piloted. And on April 21st, every elementary principal in our district sent direct information in an email to the two parents at their sites. They either did it via email or they did it via newsletter. On June 1st, there was a small newsletter that was sent to all elementary parents on June 1st with over 20,000 views on how parents could access and review the curriculum and inform them of the parent nights. Then on June 5th and June 6th of '23, there was community virtual forums that were also held with two of our directors and the publishers. But I'd also like to note, in the weekly communication that's sent from our office to all board members, the week of April 17th, May 30th, and June 2nd, all of the information regarding the fact that we were continuing to collect parent feedback was in that documentation. Thank you.
And we've gone through the process without getting now to the point where at a board meeting, if there were those 400 people, it should have been presented transparently. So many people were not aware of that particular material. So for us to get that-
Mrs. Wirsma? Mrs. Wirsma?
The last couple of days, it was highly problematic. So I'm just saying, it's been questionable. So I'm just saying, it's been questionable.
Well, and again, Jen, that follows Danny.
Wait, wait, wait. Mrs. Wirsma, hold on. You've spoke, Dr. Velez has spoke, you've spoke. Mr. Schwartz is going to speak, then I'm going to speak, then we can have conversation, each board member at a time. Mr. Schwartz?
Can I just finish mine?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I'm just going to finish.
Because I'm a good guy.
Thanks. And Dr. Velez, there were two more times, which, which I would like to add, that the Community Connection newsletter that went out.
Right.
Was sent out two times also to every single parent, because I got it as a parent and we as board members get it, and it was listed there, too, to every parent and teacher in the district that also requested. I went back in, and they're in an archive, too, so if you missed it on your email, you can just go on the website.
That is correct. And one other thing that I would like to clarify.
No, 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 Dr. Velez, not yet. This is discussion.
Okay. So let me just make a point.
I want her to finish, and then Mr. Schwartz, and then me. Then we can get into discussion.
Okay. So regarding this particular item, so I don't believe you're correct, Jen, and I know that this has been verified with the state. This would have to go through an adoption process, and I know our teachers and the audience can verify, and the state has also verified that because our current curriculum is 2006, and this new one is 2019, and they don't even align. Like, Chapter 1 in the written isn't Chapter 1 in the online. So they don't align, they're not the same. So.
It takes you through the alignment. You can get that done.
Okay, but it would have to go through an adoption, is the problem. And I'm just curious, like, you've read through it, Jen? Like, you're fine with what's in it? Like, you've read it all?
The bottom line is that online component would have echoed what our 2006 resource had, and then it was updated for 2019 to be completely, fully compliant.
Okay.
So what they told me is this was the traditional resource that would match the book.
So, okay.
Have all the options, which totally could be done without an official adoption. But at this point, I understand where you're at. I'd love to hear Mr. Schwartz and also Dr. Komrosky.
So, well, just to finish mine, just to finish mine, since you did interrupt me there, but I mean, it is, I am curious why you're interested in this particular curriculum, because the concerns you have with the, with TCI are much more mild than the ones you might see in, in this one. So there is a document.
No, it's not true. You would use the electronic components that echo what is in the current book that we're using. So it would follow that sequence. With the Fair Act and other elements, it's all there.
Right.
But through the consultant that I spoke with, she mapped it out. And what I'm saying is I wish we'd had some additional time to hear that, because I am not the consultant.
Okay.
But that was presented as such, and it was something that I had wished Dr. Velez or somebody else would have brought forward when we were given the illusion that we had choices and options.
Okay.
And it wasn't thinking.
Okay, okay. It is my turn now, Jen. Honestly, it's my turn.
There were a lot of questions raised for a lot of parents.
Mrs., uh, wait, wait. I'm going to interrupt. I'm going to interrupt. Mrs. Wirsma, there is no discussion right now. Let's let one board member talk, then Mr. Schwartz, then me, then we'll go to discussion. Is that all right with you? Mrs. Wirsma?
Yes.
Okay.
Go right ahead, I'm listening, Mr. Schwartz.
So the only thing I'm saying is.
But there's no dialogue right now. You can answer those questions after this, after Schwartz and after I speak, okay? Ms. Barclay, does that sound fair to you, too?
Yes. So just in conclusion, the only thing I was trying to get at was, there's a really handy document that was produced by this curriculum to help us see how it meets the Fair Act, because that's kind of what we've been talking about, is that it will help us meet the Fair Act. And, you know, it has some really great points in it, such as in second grade, it explains how families are organized, and it talks about some families have one parent, some have a mom and a dad, two moms or two dads, and it goes through and explains the definition of gay and lesbian. And then in fourth grade, it talks about gay rights, it shows a picture of the couple, the same-sex couple who was able to be married after the Obergefell versus Hodges decision. And in Chapter 7 in the book, in this online material you're discussing, Harvey Milk is featured in the citizenship feature where his contribution to the LGBTQ movement is described. Students are urged to reflect on the importance of honesty exemplified by Harvey Milk. So I'm excited to hear that you're a proponent for this, for this curriculum, Mr. Schwartz.
Aye, yee. Thank you, thank you. Let's yield the floor to Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Schwartz?
I've spoken to quite a few teachers who looked at this curriculum as one of the four that we might adopt, and they all told me it was totally unsuitable for our district because of some of the things that Allison mentioned, that she felt would be objectionable in our community. I also want to just reflect on what one teacher wrote me. I would urge the board not to approve this action tonight. If my understanding is correct, Scott Forsman Publishing shared the online platform for the 2019 update with us during the pilot process. To my understanding, this is the platform that corresponds to the new updated 2019 edition of the text. I'm really unclear as to why we would use a 2009, 19, online components with 2006 printed components. The printed text would not match the online text. This doesn't make sense. Additionally, this combination of materials has not been piloted or vetted in any of our classrooms. We've spent a ton of time and energy looking at TCI and all of its components. No one, teachers, parents, community members, have begun the time to look at the materials online for Scott Forsman, except for Allison, as this appeared in an action item yesterday and has not been mentioned as a possible part of our adoption at the workshop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Okay, I have, I have a couple clarifying questions. So for me, and I'll, and I'll bring in our attorney on this, because I want to know legally, let's hypothetically say, Jen, that this adoption passed it. I want to know if it's illegal. And so one of the things I have, the questions I have, and I, and just, just for clarity,
Are you asking me, or are you waiting for Mr. Huff?
No, 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 I'm not asking. I'm speaking. Thank you, thank, thank you, though.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. I'm going to ask Mr. Huff to weigh in in a minute here, but for me, just, I took, I took all the K through 5 curriculum, hard copy workbooks, online, and I reviewed every single page. On the, on the kindergarten, obviously in the last meeting, we voted that in. I didn't see anything, 1st through 5. I, you know, I didn't catch something that somebody else did. It was of concern, so, you know, we talked about that. And all I want to say is, as I looked through all this, and my, my question is, and this is, we are staunch supporters, ready to die on the hill of Ed Code 60002, literally, where we have teachers and parents and community members review the curriculum that's to be adopted. Now, I think you said that it, that did need to happen, that it was augmented, augment, 2019 augmented resource online. So my question, my question is, is, one, has any community member, parent, or teacher reviewed the 2019 augmented resources to be in compliance with the Ed Code 60002 that we staunchly fought on? And then I want to know from Mr. Huff, would it have been possible, I mean, and this is, this is my thought, on the last board meeting, I thought by default, the old curriculum was automatically going to be used. From what I was told, it's not in compliance with the Fair Act and has not been in compliance with the Fair Act for a while. The only way it could be in compliance with the Fair Act is if we adopted the 2019 resources to make it compliant with the Fair Act. My question is, is if no family member, sorry, no community member, no parent, no teacher has literally looked at it, would that be, you know, could you, could you pass that curriculum and vote it in and not violate that Ed Code? And do you have to vote it in? Or could you say, no, we already have this, yeah, 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 it's outdated, but the 2019 augmented resources, well, that's just, you know, we don't have to vote on that, that could just remain, or like, we could just adopt it without taking a vote right now? Because what I want to make very clear to the audience, and, and Mrs. Wirsma, believe me, I appreciate all the hard work you've done, big time. You have been a staunch investigator of all this. What I want to know is, would we, would we be violating any board policy or Ed Code if that's the case? And let me be clear, Governor Newsom, Thurmond, Bonta, they want, they want, they're just, they're salivating at us to make a mistake. So for me, I want to make the right decision. We do not have curriculum. We are three weeks out. We have to have curriculum. This is just my concern. What I'm saying is, we have to take action that's legal, not illegal, to avoid litigation. I just want Mr. Huff to flesh all this out, because if I'm wrong, well, then we already have curriculum, and we don't need to take any action tonight, and then we can use these 2019 augmented resources. Mrs. Barclay has looked, and she has found things that I didn't have time to review all this online. I'm not sure, and anyways, I'll let Mr. Huff weigh in. I want to know, you know, answers to some of these questions I have about Ed Code and bylaws. Could we use the curriculum that we currently have without taking a vote using these 2019 augmented resources? Mr. Huff, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Komrosky. Good evening. Good evening, board members. Good evening, interim superintendent Velez. Good evening, Temecula community. I'd like to answer that question by first reading Education Code Section 60002. It's only one sentence long, so bear, just bear with me. The title of that code section is "Selection of Instructional Materials: Involvement of Teachers, Parents, and Members of the Community." And it reads, "Each district board shall provide for substantial teacher involvement in the selection of instructional materials, and shall promote the involvement of parents and other members of the community in the selection of instructional materials." So within this action item is the selection of instructional materials. It's the 2019 online supplement. And you've asked for my opinion, and you've asked me to give it on the floor, and so that's my job. And my job is that I don't believe that the district would be in compliance with this Education Code section if it were to adopt the 2019 supplemental, online supplement, without first having involved, obtained substantial teacher involvement, as well as promoted the involvement of the parents and other members of the community. Your board policies also directly address this issue. First, you have Board Policy 6141. It requires that before any curriculum be adopted, that it come from a recommendation of the superintendent. It also provides that there needs to be a process for the development, selection, and or adoption of that curriculum that is adopted by the school board, I mean, sorry, the school district, that is followed. And there is a process, and to my understanding, none of that process was followed with regard to the 2019 online supplement. There are several other requirements within Board Policy 6141 that bear directly upon this, so I don't think I really need to go on much about it, except for I would say that Board Policy 6141 also requires the district to regularly evaluate the district's curriculum to ensure that it complies with any new law. And the current curriculum that you have is from 2006. The Fair Act was adopted in 2012. And it's, I've heard from educational professionals that your current curriculum does not comply with that state law. I would also add that you have administrative regulation in 6141 that requires for any refinement of your current curriculum documents, that you have the subject area task force meet on that question before that action is taken. So I think you have a very clear mandate from the Education Code, as well as a well-established board policy that weighs heavily on this question and suggests that the district is not currently in position to lawfully adopt this curriculum augmentation.
I would just like to say, so that y'all know that I did do my homework. I talked to multiple people and about the fact that this could be an auxiliary component. It's something we could have utilized several years back, and I'm surprised that we didn't, because we would have helped special ed and our ELA students. These are components to strengthen what we had. And just know, for those of you listening out there, I did get multiple opinions, and I respect Mr. Huff. Thank you so much for sharing and being a part of this process. This was something to augment what we have, and I'm confident that had we had more time... And see, I think that's the real issue here, is that we got kind of pushed to the wall, and I don't think good decisions are made when that is key. And it's happenstance in some ways, and it's unfortunate. I think if we'd even had another week, four or five days, this would have been a more viable discussion with more perspectives that could have been offered. But with that, Mr. Huff, thank you. I appreciate the work that you've done.
Mr. Huff, thank you, Mrs. Wirsma. Mr. Huff, I want to ask, let's say, let's say hypothetically, we didn't have the last board meeting. No, no, reverse that. Let's say that we, we adopted this curriculum tonight. I want to, I really want to flush this out to make it very clear for everyone in Temecula, you know, community, TBUSD, that this is, I just want to hash it all out. If this were to be adopted and the 2019 curriculum were to be implemented, what kind of lawsuit would that look like? And could you navigate through that on Ed Code versus bylaw? Please walk us through what that would look like, especially in light of right now, what is happening at state level with our district. Everybody?
I mean, I guess.
No, 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 no. Let, let him speak, please, please.
Go ahead.
Let him. Thank you. Mr. Huff, you have the floor.
I don't even want to consider a lawsuit.
Let him, let him speak.
Well, as you know, it's on my preference to address those kind of questions outside of closed session, but the question has been asked. And I'm going to refer back to my comments of a moment ago, not so much about board policy, because the board can actually vote to set aside its policy, but that's a process in and of itself, and you haven't undertaken that process yet. So we could probably get around 6141, even though it's a very rigorous and, by the way, commonly adopted policy throughout the state. But you can't get around 60002 of the Education Code. Whether we call this an augmentation, auxiliary, or adoption of new, I can't get past the plain language of this section that says that if it involves the selection of instructional materials, that's what we would be doing tonight, is selecting instructional materials. And the legislature has imposed upon the school district a mandatory duty to provide for substantial teacher involvement in that process, as well as to promote the involvement of parents and our community in that process. And so when a school district fails to follow a mandatory duty, they're exposed to an action by any interested stakeholder to what's called a writ of mandate proceeding, because you have a mandatory duty to do that, as opposed to a discretionary duty. You're discretionary, you have discretion as to what curriculum to adopt, but you don't have discretion in the certain process that you have to follow in how you adopt the curriculum. That's the distinction. And then here, I am concerned that with regard to this action item, that process has not been followed.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. I'm going to yield the floor to Dr. Velez, and then we can begin discussion. That way, we've exhausted everyone, one at a time. So, Dr. Velez, I know you want to weigh in on this.
Correct. Thank you. Mr. Huff, thank you for that. I would also like to add to this, that not only has there been consultation with Mr. Huff on this, because this was added to the agenda late last night, me and my team have been on the phone with California Department of Education, as well as Riverside County Office of Education, who made it very clear to us today that the 2019 supplemental material cannot be adopted because it does meet Fair Act, it does meet all the requirements. That has to be, that has to go actually through a curriculum adoption process. It cannot be deemed a supplemental. In addition to that, before we move on, I want to make sure that I'm able to address the accusations made earlier in regards to how this meeting was rushed. First, I want to be clear that staff has zero control, and they are unable to determine when special meetings are called. That is 100% the board president's decision, so I want to make sure that we get that on the record. Thank you.
So, so right now, we're just at this first item, so we can call for a vote to approve it or not, is that correct?
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I don't think we...
Yeah, I don't think we can call for a vote to approve it based on what our attorney said. I think we would be putting ourselves in grave legal, financial jeopardy if we disregard the advice of our attorney, who said that it is illegal to do it. So I don't, I'm sorry, can I just finish? I don't, I don't think we need to vote on it or discuss it. I think it's a moot point.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt additional materials and the 2019 online supplement published by Scott Forsman?
Moved.
Moved by Mrs. Weirzma. Do I have a second? There is no second. We're going to move to the second item. So, we have public comments, and this has to be related to TCI. If anybody grandstands on anything else other than TCI, I'm going to have you yield your mic. Okay? We have 24 comments. We've got to use the bathrooms. Oh, we need a quorum. Oh, we have a quorum. You can use the bathroom. Yeah. Okay.
Two minutes again.
Two minutes, Mrs. Weirzma. What do you think? Two minutes apiece on these?
Two minutes, Steve.
Two minutes, fine.
Two minutes.
We'll take that.
Okay, here we go. And audience, please be respectful to all the speakers. Thank you.
First up is Courtney Cooper, followed by Rachel Boland.
Good evening. It's become public knowledge that this meeting was called to discuss, obviously, the needed social studies curriculum for the next school year. So pertaining to TCI, I feel that we have two options here. You obviously previously decided that you were not going to adopt TCI, because it had certain content that wasn't age appropriate. So you wanted to implement, obviously, supplemental curriculum. However, given time constraints, the only piloted program has been TCI. And as of today, right, you either have to choose to be noncompliant, because the previous textbooks are out of date by 2006, which now we know that the previous board, before you were even elected, the three of you came on, obviously was not up to par, because the social studies curriculum should have been updated back in 2016. So now you guys are playing cleanup to be state compliant. So, tonight's meeting has nothing to do with the empty threats coming from the governor, or Thurmond, or anyone else, because AB 1078 has not been passed yet. So you still have local governance. So tonight, what needs to be decided is whether you stay noncompliant, which these two board members already knew social studies wasn't up to date, versus accept TCI, but then pick and choose, scrutinize the modules, so that you still maintain your job as board members, making sure the curriculum and content remains age appropriate, versus also adopting that, but then once school starts and teachers are back in session, piloting another program to then give more parental input, so that parents can then decide while the school year starts, which book, which supplemental curriculum they actually do want.
Rachel Boland, followed by Melanie Buzar.
Hi. I hope I'm not, like, super loud. My name is Rachel Boland, and I am a parent here, and my kids go to schools in Temecula. I have twins, and we moved here for the schools. And I was also one of the parents that reviewed the curriculum, and I gave my review, and I really felt that it was a very much so age-appropriate social studies curriculum that I was excited for my kids to have. I've been really unexcited lately, and I've lost a lot of sleep, because I moved here so that my kids could go to this school district. I was told that this was the greatest school district ever, and I was so excited. But now, I'm terrified, and I think I need to move, because I want my kids to have the education that the kids before them got to have. I want them to have an education where the teachers feel free to teach with the materials that are provided, and I want them to have state mandated curriculum. I really would appreciate it if you would look at my kids, maybe we need to use, maybe I need to wear a shirt that says "Leave My Kids Alone," and let them learn. TCI is a great curriculum. I vetted it. I gave my opinion. I am one of the 400. Please listen to my voice.
Melanie, you don't want to go? Okay. Gia?
I am an actual Temecula resident and parent of students, not some random agitator invited here from out of town. I am asking Ms. Weirzma to tone down the American exceptionalism rhetoric. It is not a curriculum requirement, and/or the things we need to see in a curriculum are codified in the Education Code, not on your mental wish list. I am a true patriot and an army captain. I have proudly and honorably served our country, and I believe there are some truly exceptional things about America, but insisting on teaching that as a deal breaker to approving an entire curriculum is ludicrous. The equality initially discussed in the early development of our nation was written by and for slave owners, and people set on exterminating Native Americans. The exceptionalism you're referring to has been a huge detriment to people of color. Demanding a curriculum that espouses American exceptionalism simply spreads an unsupported opinion, which is no more valid than opposing Little League teams screaming at each other, "We're number one!" Approve the TCI curriculum in its entirety, so English language learners and special needs students get the supplemental materials they need. It's time to stop this American exceptionalism silliness, and get on with the business of good governance. And the final thing I want to say is that it is not sexualizing anyone by saying gay, any more than it's sexualizing someone by saying straight.
Lisa Mann, followed by Amber Lane.
I was here on Tuesday, and I'll say it again. I am a 10-year resident and parent of a TVUSD child. I, I don't understand why people are saying the information wasn't out there. I watched the meeting where the teachers gave up the PowerPoint. It was something like 48 slides, and they practically begged for this, so politely for this curriculum to be adopted, and they showed graphs and charts of how it was vetted, and who was asked, and all that. I saw all of that. So how this was somehow leaked or a secret, that this was approved, I saw that meeting a few months back. I would gladly hold Zoom workshops for any parent, TVUSD parent, who wants to learn how they can be involved, or how they can know what's going on in their classroom. I'm just going to briefly list them, if they want to know what TCI is all about. Infinite Campus is an app that tells you your kid's grades, if they were tardy, what's going on. It dings my phone all day long. Canvas is another app where you can log in and see literally everything your kid is doing, all the assignments, everything. A full set of hard copy books come home every year. They go on a shelf, they're never used by my kid, and then they go back to school. I wish we weren't paying for those, but that's for another day. I can read them every night if I feel like it. My kid had a new math curriculum. I was surveyed about that. I had to say, "I don't know, because I'm not that smart in math." There's been parental rights laws. I can't quote them now, but they've been on the books since 1999. Or you could go in and talk to the teacher and the administration if you have concerns. More than one Christian private school, and that's fine by me, uses TCI in TV, in Temecula right now. Thank you.
Amber Lane, followed by Steve Campos.
Good evening, governing board and executive cabinet. My name is Dr. Amber Lane. I'm a TVUSD parent of two current elementary school students, and one that reviewed the TCI curriculum at her children's school. Speaking to the board in this capacity is not something that I ever thought I would actually do, but I feel that it's extremely important to share with you my family's TVUSD story, and that Mrs. Weirzma hears from someone in her trusty area than she left. My oldest daughter was diagnosed with dyslexia during the beginning of her second grade year. At that time, she was several grade levels behind in reading. While many parents would have worried, I didn't, because I knew that she had a phenomenal, phenomenal school and phenomenal teachers, and that together as teachers and parents, we would help my daughter find success. And we sure did. Her second and third grade teachers, along with her RSB teacher and reading specialist, helped her to learn the skills and strategies that good readers use every day, and I'm proud to say that she is close to matching her grade level peers. So thank you to the team that did so much for my daughter. I appreciate you more than you will ever know. I tell you this story because her gifted teachers used every resource available to them to help my daughter. That coupled with decades of educational expertise helped to ensure that she enters fourth grade thriving, and I'm excited for her as her educational journey continues. I tell you all of this because I think it's important that you know the story of a student and the impact your decision here will have tonight. These resources are going to be able to help my child continue to thrive. Her teachers need the ability to change the Lexi level of her reading. They need the ability to allow her to listen to passages rather than reading them. These two accommodations alone will topple barriers and allow her to have access to the rich and wonderful history of California that she is so excited to learn. Mrs. Weirzma and other trustees, are you going to keep barriers in place that could stop children from learning? Or are you going to do what your campaign promised, which is to listen to parents and help them ensure a quality education for their child? If you're going to make the right decision-
Steve Campos, followed by Daniel Molina.
If the Fair Act has been around since 2012, I'm curious as to why we're discussing it in 2023. If we've been out of compliance, I guess the question is, for how long have we been out of compliance, and why are we getting to this point in 2023 to finally make this decision? Now, that being said, with the curriculum adoption that sits before us, just so you guys know, I'm okay with whatever decision you make. Obviously, you guys have a decision to make. It's a tough one, and it's one that, you know what? You guys voted, you ran on parental agreement and rights. And so if that's the will of the parents, then so be it. Obviously, me personally, I'm going to support you regardless of whether this passes or does not pass. My concern is with leadership. My concern is that, where is, I understand that there has been an email sent, but can we at least see the email at some point? Because 400, we've been at these board meetings for months. No one has ever mentioned 400 parents in a survey. I've heard 45, that's what I've heard. But all of a sudden, between Tuesday and today, we get 400. And that's unfair to the parents, to the school board members, and you can't blame them, because they don't have access to the information. They can only be given the information from our cabinet. Now, where was our cabinet in disseminating that information? Personally, I have a vote of no confidence within this leadership, and it hasn't been just this leadership. It's been for years. I'm speaking in terms of the curriculum, because obviously, obviously, the cabinet makes decisions on the curriculum and feeds information. All I am asking is for transparency. Where is that information? Why is this the first time that we hear about it? I'm telling you right now, I know if it would have come forward, Allison and Steve would have mentioned something, but we did not have that parent sample. And to be here today without even seeing it, so we were given dates on June 1st? That's ridiculous.
Daniel Molina, followed by Rusty.
Mr. Molina, remember that mic.
Yes, sir. Board members, I thought I had three minutes. I only have two. I think it's best that I freestyle it, so you understand that I'm really speaking from the heart. I'm not here as a conservative. I'm not here as a liberal. I'm here as a patriot first. A lot of the parents are worried about parental rights. As I speak right now, there's teachers behind me who are hooting and hollering. Imagine what happens when us as parents come to them with concerns in the classroom. Imagine how much we get disregarded. I, I have no issue with new curriculum. I'm not trying to keep my children from learning or being educated. I am simply trying to ensure that I agree with what my children are being taught, and I am kept in the loop. I appreciate all the information that you gave of where everything was posted. Thank you very much, Allison. I appreciate you going and doing your due diligence and finding that information about Harvey Milk, the things that the parents opposed in the last addendum item. I think that's very important. I think that that shows that you stand for all parents, and you and I are in the same fight. We get caught up in the minutia of everything that's going on, and the governor comes down and makes me seem like I'm some conservative activist or some extremist. These people here, these teachers, I have had great teachers, and I'm sure they are great, even though some of them don't like me just for being here and speaking my mind, but that's okay. I think it's important that we acknowledge that there are parents in this community on both sides of the aisle, and both of those parents deserve to be represented. All we are saying is that we are not being represented in the schools, and you are where the rubber meets the road, and I hope that as I continue to come to these every month, we can work on more and better transparency and parent involvement. Thank you.
Rusty, followed by Liz Woodley.
So, there's a couple of things that I wanted to address that are not sitting right with me. You went through quite a litany of ways that information went out, that this curriculum was going to be coming out, and people could have viewed it. Is that right, Ms. Velez? I'm sorry, you can't answer. My mistake. But you went through a lot of things, a lot of effort that went through. But with that, you only got 400 responses. If that was me doing that, I would say that there's something still wrong here. We did a lot, but we didn't do enough. If we only got 400 responses, something else needs to be done. I can't, I'm having trouble concentrating with this. So, the other thing is, with 400 responses, you got 98.8% of the people that approved it, so there was four people essentially, five maybe, who didn't approve it, who had a problem with that. Again, there's a problem there. There's a problem there, and that needs to be looked at a little closer. I agree that we should hold off on this, look at it for another six months or a year. Has anybody looked at the possibility of contacting the education, the state education office and saying, "We know that we're not in compliance. We haven't been in compliance for 11 years." A little weird, again. But we don't want to rush this. So we will get in compliance. If you want to send down, if you want to make some sort of a stipulated agreement, a judgment, or somebody's overwatching us, do that. But we want a chance for all the parents to look at this. The other thing is, somebody was talking about the TCI, or not the TCI, but the other curriculum that was too American, too pro-American, this devotee over here, obviously, of Howard Zinn and the 1619 Project. Well, I just want to say for the record that by God, America is an exceptional country. We always have been an exceptional country. Not perfect, but if there's a curriculum that talks about that, then I'm okay with that, and will not, we should not be disapproved just on that basis. I appreciate your time.
Liz Woodley, followed by Kenny.
Good evening. I'm a parent of TVUSD students and a homeowner in Temecula. I am frustrated and angered and exhausted. The only way I can describe what is happening with the TCI curriculum debate is the equivalent of my being appointed to a hospital board of directors as someone who does not work in the medical field, and overturning the will of over 1,000 doctors and medical experts because my religion forbade a procedure. It would be ludicrous then, and it is ludicrous now. You three are not educators, and you are not educational experts. Moreover, you do not speak for me. You do not speak for my family, no matter what you say on Fox News or- You do not speak for my family, no matter what you say on Fox News or OAN, Jen. Your hissy fit is costing the district millions of dollars in fines and legal fees, and I resent your abuse of my tax dollars. This is a gigantic waste of everyone's time, and you should be ashamed. Kids are going to learn that gay people exist regardless of what happens tonight. If we hold off tonight and wait, we will be further out of compliance and expose ourselves to needless lawsuits and more expenses. With that said, I urge the board to support our educators, support the experts, support the TCI curriculum. Thank you.
Kenny, followed by... Oh, Kenny.
Hello. Apparently, I need to remind you that I'm a father of three in the school board district here, and I'm a homeowner as well. I never received any survey. I wasn't part of the 400 as well. Earlier, I had two quotes from Karl Marx. Basically, I won't repeat them. Basically, he wanted state-run education. Gavin Newsom just said, "We will purchase the books and hand them out. If these extremist school board members won't do their job, we will, the state. And we will fine them for their incompetence." To the board members and the parents and supporters of Gavin Newsom, this is fascism. There's no denying this. This is state-run education. Okay? To members Schwartz and Barclay, I understand, and I feel bad for you. You were never taught to stand your ground. You were never taught to not fall in line.
Sir, this is going to be related to the curriculum, or I'm going to concede your time. It's got to be related to the curriculum, TCI.
When we hear statements like, "We should trust the professional educators that approve this curriculum," and other school boards that are already in use of it, well, Angels in America was one thing that was let in. We do not trust the educators. We do not trust the administrators.
Sir, you got to concede your time. You know what? All right, all right. I'm going to give them, I'm going to add 15 seconds. 15 seconds. You're all going to get kicked out. We will conduct business without you, especially this side. You know what I'll do? You're going to make me lose the patience? You're all going? They can stay. We're going to reward the adults that act like adults. This whole crowd has been causing resistance the whole night. That's it. That's your last warning.
I'll close with the big three. Please stand your ground. Don't fold to Gavin Newsom. Okay? Make the right decision. Thank you.
Is there another Kenny H. out there? Okay. Edgar Diaz, followed by Stephanie Patton.
With the curriculum, I emphasize that parent-student-teacher relationship is key to a student's education. We welcome parents to reach out to your student's teacher and interact about your student's strengths, challenges, and questions about the curriculum and classroom environment. In the class, I constantly speak with parents about priorities that are best for their students. Reach out. The conversations are welcome and valuable. Teaching US history, which is part of what we do in social science, is there was parents that reached out and said, "My kid is anxious. They don't want to see anything with war." It's kind of hard in a US history course, but we made some adjustments and we made it work. TVUSD needs to provide a platform where students will learn from home in the Home Instead program, have access to learning materially, virtually. Without the online access for these students, how will they fulfill their learning requirements from this program? TVUSD needs to provide a platform where English learners and students with IEPs have access to dynamic online reading solutions that read the text out loud. How many of you enjoyed popcorn in the classroom? Not many. So, now, students can actually have the computer read it to them without them being singled out in class. This dynamic solution also adjusts to an independent and instructional reading ability as they're able to answer questions and are able to have access to deeper text at their reading level, their independent reading level. It's a valuable tool. They can access the reading content and improve their reading ability simultaneously. What else does not provide access to the content that we are providing in the classroom? TCI provides this platform. I hope there's a solution that can be reached today so as a district, we can move forward. And again, my hope extends to you as governing board members that you arrive at a common sense solution that provides materials for students to succeed.
Stephanie? Stephanie Patton, followed by Julie Gary.
Hi, I'm Stephanie, a parent of two current students in the district. I'm going to keep this really brief. My original plan was to read out loud the TCI fourth grade supplemental curriculum for those who are confused about what it contains to prove that there is nothing in there about sexuality or lifestyle. But after hearing Mrs. Barclay's comments just now, I feel this is no longer necessary because Mrs. Weirzma and company's hypocrisy and personal agenda have clearly been brought to light. So, thank you, Mrs. Barclay.
Julie Gary, followed by Dawn.
This has been the biggest waste of taxpayer resources and time that I can think of in TVUSD history. There is only one pathway forward that meets all of ed code, the state standards, the California Social Studies framework, and the Fair Act, and that is to adopt the TCI curriculum in its entirety, including access to online resources for all students. Komrosky, on your Twitter, you said that supports for English learners and special education students is very important to you. Those supports are only found online. I can't change the Lexi level of a book for a child in real time if it's in print, but you can do it online. You can't change the text size for visually impaired student in a hardcover textbook, but you can do it online. So, those resources are crucial. And for some students, they're required as part of their individual education plan or their IEP. You are also not legally allowed to silence the voices and experiences and history of LGBTQ people. You can't erase them from history. They are legally protected class under the California Constitution, and your ratio of their voices is one of the reasons why the district is being investigated for civil rights violations. So, if you want Newsom to get off your neck, you need to stop breaking the law. You need to adopt this curriculum, including all of the online resources, and you need to start being a better leader.
Dawn? 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 I'm going to butcher the last name. I'm sorry. Nicole, followed by Emil.
I'm changing what I originally came here to speak about in order to apply with these rules. I'm about to begin my 24th year teaching in this district. I've been a part of a TCI adoption as a middle school science teacher, and I'd like to speak on how that went. It was disastrous. And I wish that we had board members that had the courage, or anyone involved. I wish Nicole Daeus was here tonight. That would have put a pause on that adoption for us. It has only been in our classrooms for a few short years, and we are already having textbooks sitting in our classrooms that no longer match the online version. We are on a committee, and we are creating common assessments. We are not using TCI. We are having to go outside of TCI to create our common assessments because TCI is so inadequate. Now, I know this is for science and not social studies, but have we asked the middle school teachers that are currently using TCI, either in social studies and in science, how it's going? Are they... How receptive is TCI to solving the problems we're having? I can tell you, I can't use their gradebook. Their programming is too slow. I will not assign any assignments in TCI or grade anything through TCI because they will not improve their online program. It was a waste of money. Please consider that.
Emil, followed by Jennifer.
Good evening, everyone. Dawn, I am so happy that you went right before me. Every adoption that I've been through in my 30 years of experience as a teacher has been pretty much rinky-dink. And I just, before I speak to the curriculum, I just want to commend Mr. Gonzalez, and I think you too, Dr. Komrosky, because you were on that committee trying to revamp the adoption process. I think the vision that you guys have set forth is, in terms of getting parents and the community involved, it's one of the best things I've ever heard. Okay? So, I really want to commend you on that. In terms of the curriculum, you know, the board workshop was very interesting to me. And the reason that I want to say something about Dawn is that in the board workshop, the teachers that came up here, they talked about the activities, okay, that the students were engaged in, which I think is part of the process. I'm interested in the book. I didn't really hear them. I heard one teacher briefly talk about the book, okay? And that concerns me in terms of what these teachers actually went through when they were looking at this curriculum. Because at the end of the day, it's just like Dawn said, when you come back, okay, you can't really rely upon anything, okay, except the book. Okay? And the book, to me, okay, as a parent and as a teacher, has some issues. Okay? It's, we've got some morality issues within some of the modules and in the supplemental material. And the issue for me is, is how are those questions, if they come up from a student, going to be answered by a teacher? That is what concerns me. Okay? So, I just want to leave you with that. And I say, take a pause. Take a pause.
Jennifer, followed by Nancy Wood.
I moved to Temecula last year. I've never been aboard a PTA. I've never been to a school board meeting before last month. I've never had any involvement in a school nor felt that I should because I feel like that's what you guys want to do, and that's, if you're up there, that's why that you're up there. You want to, and you're capable, and you have more knowledge and professional abilities than I ever do, and you don't need my input. Your intentions are assumed to be good. I trust the teachers. I trust board members. Unfortunately, I feel like I have to insert myself in this process because of all the changes and the concerns that are coming up. I have gone ad nauseam about my support for the teachers' decisions in the pilot program and the parental support of the results of the piloting program and what the teachers and the parents have thought about this program, and I support that. So, I'm going to spend my next minute talking about my experiences with Temecula in the school when I have myself ran into an issue where I had a concern. And it was as simple as calling the school and saying, "You know what? My daughter is, may have an issue with something that's getting brought up. What can we do about it?" And it was as simple as a phone call. They listened to my concern. They took notes. They said, "Hey, you know, that's understandable concern. Let us call you back." And then, they addressed my concern, and it was resolved without issue. We didn't need to remove curriculum. She didn't need to have to trade classes. There was no extra concerns there. And I think that that is important and something that should be done. I think that can be done with other parents and should be done and something that we should promote. In addition, I think that it's important to have all of the resources when you vote tonight. There is a lot of kids. My kids are average kids. She's an A and B student. My son is active. He's going to be smart, but there is not always the ability for kids to just all learn the same. We all learn differently. We need different resources. They need those materials. Please vote.
Nancy, followed by Christine.
Hi. I am a concerned resident of Temecula. I have been attending the board members since, the board meetings since the beginning of the year, and I have also taken on the opportunity to review the curriculum, the TCI curriculum. I spent three days at the district office going through each of the books, the textbooks, and I found, and actually, what I'm down to is two paragraphs. I took your suggestion, and everybody else has talked about everything, so it'll be short. But what I found was that the social studies, a live curriculum, is grade level appropriate, it is inclusive, and it is engaging. I found nothing inappropriate in the, and believe me, I looked for it, inappropriate in the curriculum. I took note that the curriculum was developed with the assistance of college professors and elementary teachers, not just from the state of California, but from a variety of states, including Indiana, New Hampshire, Illinois, Maryland, state of Washington, Virginia, Texas, Michigan, Florida, and Ohio. The curriculum properly addresses how individual students are part of a family, a community, a state, and a country, and how a student can act as a respected citizen and patriot. The curriculum provides a sense of self, civic decorum, rules and government, which are all necessary tools in a successful...
Ma'am, thank you. Thank you.
Christine, followed by Suzie.
Hello again. Still a TVUSD parent of three, and I'm back to urge you to adopt the TCI curriculum in full, including the online portions. I know teachers and parents who have piloted the TCI materials, who are actually in TVUSD, and they all recommend them. In the last meeting, Mr. Gonzalez mentioned that the initial TCI feedback, well, he talked about the initial TCI feedback, and he said approximately 15 parents gave negative or neutral, so that's not even negative feedback on TCI, but he neglected to mention that that was less than one-third of the initial parent feedback received. The remaining 70% of the feedback was positive. Teachers have overwhelmingly recommended this curriculum, and Mrs. Weirzma herself committed to the teachers that she would be supporting recommending TCI to the rest of the board to their faces. The curriculum is supported by a community of actual TVUSD parents, and clearly, you know about the additional 400 parents feedback because it's in the agenda that you put together. I sometimes wonder if the board majority isn't talking about the additional parental feedback received because the feedback didn't support your narrative. So, I urge you to adopt the full TCI curriculum so that you can make inclusive choices for your whole community of hybrid learners, special education students, and English language learners. Show our district that you have the integrity to make long-term choices that support all of our students and staff and positions them for success in the future. And in closing, I'm offended that we spent 90 minutes on an agenda item that wasn't even legal. And as the memes like to say, "That could have been an email." And I'm appalled by Mrs. Weirzma's unfounded attacks on staff regarding the curriculum matters, and I demand that she apologize to them. You, Jen, thank you.
Suzie, followed by Marissa.
Hi, good evening. I'm Suzie Stock. I've been a teacher in the district for 20... I've been a teacher for 26 years in the district, for 21. I have two high school students, one that just graduated. In reading the proposed motion for TCI, Dr. Komrosky, your own words explain why we should be adopting this TCI curriculum. Forty-seven teachers across all sites came to a consensus, hey, to adopt this curriculum. All parents were invited to review materials from March through May. All parents were invited to review materials from March through May through multiple avenues. Ms. Velez covered that in detail. Since May, two subcommittees were formed, two forum nights were held, parents had access again, and 400 parents, and again, I'm getting this from the published agendas where I got that number, or community members provided feedback. I'll say it again, please don't play chicken with the state of California with taxpayers' money. The TCI adoption that was vetted, piloted, and reviewed by all stakeholders needs to be adopted tonight. Not in a year, not in six months, tonight. I think I speak for many of us when I say I honestly don't think my mental health can take another year of these board meetings. Morale is at an all-time low. I've taught for 26 years, grew up in a family of educators, grew up in the Bible Belt, and never have I seen this much contention and division that is of your own making. Mrs. Weersma, you have continued to support this false narrative of teachers being demonized and disrespected by going on Fox News today to say that we are exposing eight and nine-year-olds to sexualized material. Your claims were intentionally false and misleading for national shock value. Saying that gay people at one time did not have civil rights, that they deserve civil rights, and that Harvey Milk fought for those civil rights is not sexualizing children.
Marissa, followed by Lori.
Sorry if I don't look at you guys. I just want to read and make sure I get what I need to say, and I'm super nervous. Hi, my name is Marissa. I've been a parent at TVUSD since 2010. My two oldest are graduates from Great Oak High School, and I have three still working their way through the district. One finishing up at Great Oak, and the littles are still at Jackson. I've had experience in school districts in other counties and also in other states. I've held positions on the PTA, sat on-site council, spent time in the classrooms, and even spent a few years feeding the Spirit of Great Oak, our gold medal-winning band at Great Oak High School. Shout out to Mr. V. As you can imagine, when educating these five kids, I've been involved in the pilot programs for various curriculums over the years. To say the parent involvement is lacking or that the district didn't properly provide an opportunity for parents to review or give their opinion is laughable. I wish I could say that the way this board has turned our district into a circus is laughable, but it isn't. It is sad. It doesn't represent our community. It doesn't represent Temecula. The debate about this curriculum is rooted in hate. I'm here today representing the queer community, and not just those that are a part of my own family, but all of those, but all the queer here in Temecula, and most importantly, the queer students. You see, they seem to be getting lost in this hateful debate brought into our town from these outside agitators. Representation matters. That is why we need to update this curriculum that is as old as my senior in high school. I'd like to remind the school board that you were elected by the people, by a majority, as we are reminded of often, to do a job, and that includes all students, including the queer ones. Today, to say that the curriculum is sexualized is a blatant lie. Not only is it offensive, but it's embarrassing. You are smearing our award-winning school district through the mud with your hateful motives. You are wasting taxpayer monies to push hate disguised as your religious belief, which is also wrong. This podium is not a pulpit. Separation of church and state isn't new. And out of lack of time, I'm just going to say that I plead with you to stop allowing hate speech in this room. It's wrong. It's sad. It's really sad. Please stop. Please.
Thank you.
Order. Think we have about three more speakers.
All right. A lot of what I was going to say has been said, so I'm going to cut it a little bit short so I can get home to my dog. But I am here tonight to encourage the board to adopt the TCI social studies curriculum. At a recent meeting, Mrs. Weersma, in an effort to defend multiple expenditures, stated that maintaining the status quo is cheap. And that may be true, but what we can see over the last couple of months is that creating chaos is costly. And it's not only costly financially, it's costing our district its reputation, it's costing our community the ability to have civil discourse, and it's costing parents, educators, and students time and energy. Hence, we are here at almost 10 o'clock on a Friday night. And so I guess in leading to that, it's, the other thing that Mrs. Weersma said that I wanted to address, that she didn't want to approve the TCI curriculum because she didn't see, that, by the way, is used, that all the private schools in the area and most of the public schools throughout the state, because she did not see American exceptionalism. But I take exception to that because American exceptionalism, as I see it, comes from a country rich in diversity, made up of immigrants from all over the world, and celebrating that is what makes America exceptional. It comes from our founding fathers not wanting to create a more perfect union, and we do that from learning from our mistakes. And I see that, I'm running out of time. So I just want to say, I really hope that you guys approve this and do not put the textbook that my 23-year-old college graduate had in first grade back into the hands of the kids this year. Thank you.
Matt, followed by Ray Fisher.
There's no other Matt, was there? Okay. I mean, a lot of times there's two. It's a common name. So, yeah, my name's Matt Delventhal. I am an actual Temecula resident and an actual TVUSD parent, to borrow a phrase I've heard thrown around this room a few times this week. And so in making a decision on the action item before you, I would urge you to maintain focus on the one thing which matters the most, and that is to draw and to reinforce a bright red line in between inappropriate discussions of section sexuality and vulnerable, impressionable K through five students in Temecula schools. So if that objective can be achieved by approving the action item as stated and taking appropriate follow-up actions, we'll all be behind you 100%. If this is the course you choose, I'd also urge you to be specific about what those follow-up actions might be to ensure that bright red line is not eroded and that parents maintain visibility and ultimate decision-making authority about how potentially objectionable topics are discussed with their kids. You know, I imagine there might be more pieces to this puzzle beyond just the books themselves. So what sorts of policies and procedures can we put in place? I also want to say that for me personally, I'll also back you 100% if you decide our students are better served by voting no. Okay? So I want to thank you for all the hard work that you've done. I don't mind being here. That's part of democracy. It's good to get more parental involvement in these, you know, people have been woken up in these past couple of years. And I also want to thank you for all the hard work you have yet to do.
Last speaker, Ray Fisher.
Couple of things that I've heard about over and over again is American exceptionalism. Well, one of the things that's exceptional about America is the way we have democracy, the way we have elections, separation of powers and checks and balances, and federalism. Federalism stops power from being in one place, but there's a ladder of laws. The U.S. Constitution is first. National laws are second. State laws are third, then come local laws and local boards. Now, we've seen this from what Mr. Huff talked about. Mr. Huff talked about the law, yeah, the Fair Act was passed in 2012. Now, one of the questions, why it takes so long to be in compliance? I'm a social studies teacher. One of the things I've known in this era of testing, social studies gets locked behind math and science and English. It's our turn now, and it's time to take our turn. Now, I, we need to pass this curriculum. One of the things that has Jen brought up with the curriculum, she found that Allison did a great job of finding, that any new curriculum is going to have stuff that's inclusive and talks about same-sex rights and talks about what the state of California has passed into law. Now, by the way, I understand, elections matter. You have a board, we have a new board that has their views, and that has to be measured. But also, elections matter. We have a state legislature and a governor, and the laws have been passed over time. So there needs to be some work done so we can stop having these meetings at 10 o'clock on a Friday night. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, we've made it through public comments. Usually the kind of person, I don't read a script, but I have a lot of notes. And I'm going to go first because I actually did call this meeting to order. And one of the reasons why is, the last meeting, I actually thought we had curriculum in place. The second I figured out that we had to call another meeting to adopt curriculum, which I was thinking was the one that we already had while we, you know, investigated the pilot for the TCI, I realized, well, and we heard Mr. Huff talk about the legalities of it. So let me walk through a series of points that I'm going to make. We definitely need curriculum. When somebody said that I'm not an educator, that breaks my heart. I'm a tenured professor. I am an educator. I'm just not a K through 12 educator. I know what it's like to teach. I know what it's like to teach. I know what it's like to adopt curriculum, to, you know, go through a curriculum. And so for me, one of the important things is, the curriculum that we have now is not compliant with the Fair Act. But if it goes scorched earth and we just say, we don't want any of it, then we get a Williams Act lawsuit because we have no curriculum. As the board president, I always have to remind the board and the audience, we have a fiscal responsibility so that I cannot steer this district into more legalities. I will not. This is just my vote. I'm only one person. We also have, you know, you know, what, let me, sorry, let me take my time. I'm not going to rush this. High-quality teaching and learning for all. I thank you, teachers, again. You have piloted this. I met a teacher at my church the other day telling me, you know what, Joseph? I piloted third grade. And I was just sitting there eating, no, she was talking to somebody else, and I was just sitting there eating a donut. She had no idea that I was a board trustee, and I'm just listening. And I talked to her for about a half an hour, and I sympathize with the teachers that put in that hard work and dedication. Now, on the last board meeting, I'm sitting there and I'm like, I really want to vote this in, but there was an e-break that was pulled in the district. And this is a very serious e-break. I'm ready to die on this hill. And it's that the parents weren't involved. There was no robust involvement with parents in the, no, 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 listen. When we had 45 parents out of 1,300, when I was presented with this new information a day later and it came out to 396 parents, I would say, well, that, that's solved. Now, some of you are going to say, whoa, 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 why did the district hide this information? All I know is, I had this information. I tasked Dr. Velez yesterday in the district for hours to sift through it, and I was highly skeptical. All right, I want these emails matched. I want to make sure that these parents and community members are in our Temecula, you know, city and not some other city. I want, I want this to be vetted. And I said, you know, let's start off with the first 50, I said, I wanted first name, last name, address, signatures, everything. Turns out that that, it's not as easy as that, but at least the emails got verified to where those community members, they're from Temecula. So I said, okay. And I said, well, that satisfies one mechanism that I was not willing to let go of that e-break. Because, I mean, there's an e-break and the car stops, but we got to get the car rolling to get curriculum for the teachers and the students at Temecula, or we just look bad as a district. We know this. So we're in a pickle because we had curriculum that's not Fair Act compliant, and we can't bring in the 2019 curriculum unless we adopt a pilot, or we're going to violate Ed Code 60002 all over again. So here we are. So for now, before I finish this, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask this board to, I've heard parents complain about this last-minute data that we got, and some people are skeptical that it's valid, that it even works, because the board didn't have it. I said, all right, no problem. I will solve this. Right now, I want to form a subcommittee. I nominate Allison to work with me, and Mr. Huff, and Dr. Velez. After this meeting, if I have consensus from the board, we will exhaust every single parent, community member that was involved in that survey, all 396, every single one, to make sure that no skepticism can come across that data. If that is, if that is vetted, I don't want to hear anybody complain. Do you accept? And do I have consensus from the board to form the subcommittee to work with Dr. Velez and Mr. Huff to look through all of it?
To further analyze the data just to make sure?
Yes, to verify.
Yeah. We're not holding up the adoption. You're just saying like, as a sidebar to do that.
Yes, as a sidebar.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to do that.
This satisfies the skepticism of that data. Now, I let off the e-break, and I say, all right, 60002 has been satisfied for now. I trust, but I'll verify. So that way, we can get some curriculum moving. Now, this is a friendly reminder for the teachers and the parents and the students, at any time, if TCI is adopted, at any time, we as a board, we can pull the e-break. You know why? Somebody says, you know what, this is concerning to me. I don't want this in there. Say, okay, 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 we heard this, you know, we run it through Dr. Velez, you know, the superintendent at the board, and we say, look, there's been a policy, oh, sorry, there's been a complaint that there might be inappropriate content. All right, we're going to take this to curriculum design team. We're going to pull it. We're going to reevaluate it. There's another mechanism in place. All parents and all teachers are on the same page. Again, I'm going to go back to our board priority, and I've said this a few times. Family and community, if this curriculum gets adopted in, because we need curriculum, right? The students need it. I will be the first to defend any teacher in this district if they are using TCI, if that data is all vetted. I'm taking it, I'm taking it as if it's validated now. Then I will have to say, here's the deal. I can put brakes in to protect students from being, from having inappropriate content from them. I can do that as a board member, with other board members. We could put that in place. But we can also move ahead and give the benefit of the doubt to the teachers because we did it as a community. There is no backstabbing after this. There is no tribalism. There is no teachers versus parents, parents versus teachers. How about a community, literally? So as, so as an educator, I find that very important because if, you know, and you might say, well, I want more robust parental involvement. Look, we could do this pilot four, or five, six, seven, eight times. Look, all I can do is say, the pilots get better. I am very grateful for the subcommittees I was on with the staff that I've worked with. That is going to be way better the next time we go along. And all I can say to the parents that didn't get involved in this last pilot, we will make the marketing good for you. We will make it easier. We will adjust the modality so that you can have email, phone conversation, Zooms. Literally, if you're not getting that, you talk to me. I will literally go to the district office with you and say, hold on, this person was overlooked. They didn't get this. The marketing will be better. The parental involvement will be better. And at that point, you just got to get off your butt and go in there and do the pilot as a parent. You got to be responsible. All of us, all parents in the district, okay? So the teachers worked hard, the parents worked hard. So that's my thought with this.
Joe?
And so, yeah, yeah.
If I could.
I'm almost done. Let me, yeah, yeah. This is, all right. Thank you for being patient so far. Now, let me remind the teachers and the parents of another Ed Code, and this is going to be very helpful. Like I said, if this curriculum gets adopted, this is something we can be all mindful of. Ed Code 2335. This is in Mrs. Weersma's op-ed. This is actually a really good Ed Code. I thought, wow, I read, okay, okay. Each teacher shall endeavor to impress upon the minds of the pupils the principles of morality, truth, justice, patriotism, and the true comprehen, sorry, when I see patriotism, you know, my wife says, he never cries. But when I do, when I hear the National Anthem, it just, it comes out, sorry. Patriotism and the true comprehensions of the rights, duties, and dignity of the American citizenship, and the meaning of equality and human dignity, including the promotion of harmonious relationships, to teach them to avoid idleness, profanity, falsehood, and to foster environment free from discriminatory attitudes, practices, events, and activities. So when I think about that, it even goes back into, you know, the conversation we had last time. All right, look, if there's any vulgarity, pornography, obscenity, erotic, or whatever, we can pull the e- we can pull the e-break. We don't stop curriculum. We just pull the e-break and say, "Let's pull that module. Let's, let's, let's reexamine it. We want to make sure that we're in compliance with 2335 as educators, right? We don't want our, um, students subjected to anything inappropriate." So, when I say all this, I'm just trying to emphasize community, and I'm almost done. Last but not least, we've already had a consensus. Governor Newsom, I act independently and authoritatively from you. I am a sovereign citizen of the United States of America. I was voted in as a trustee. Now, I'm a board member. I will make my decisions. I don't care what you do at the state level. I'm glad you're concerned about districts, and I'm glad you're concerned about education. I make my decision completely independent of what you do. And so, with that, I wanna ask the board consensus, can we, and I have to have consensus, I cannot do this on my own. If the, uh, actually, no, we'll wait, we'll wait until after the vote. All I'm saying is, it had nothing to do with Governor Newsom. Our kids need an education. They need curriculum. They need it. We have to provide it. If we do not, we're in a Williams Act. That is a fact. If we do not provide curriculum, I want everybody to hear this, we will literally be sued for a Williams Act violation. We will have no curriculum. Okay? I just want everybody to know this. Okay? So, when, when I put forward this motion with Smith, with Mr. Huff, everybody please, thank you. Unit 12 was, was of discussion at the last board meeting for fourth grade. I'm recommending, this is a compromise for the district. The district moves together as a whole, the teachers, the parents, and the community members and the staff. I'm going to urge to take a vote to where that gets pulled, it goes to subcommittee, it doesn't face students, just gets pulled and gets evaluated. That was the biggest contention in the last meeting for inappropriate content. Fine, it's pulled. That's the safety mechanism. I'm asking the other board members to compromise and vote that way so that it can be evaluated. Otherwise, I am not voting on it. I'm, I'm gonna tell you right now, I am gonna die on the hill. I will not subject our students to inappropriate content. I will not. So, that is the compromise. That's what you're looking at. So, with that, I yield the floor.
Joe, if I could.
Absolutely. Thank you. I know that was, that was a long speech.
No, and, and I, I appreciate your honesty and your commitment to, uh, our children. I never doubted that, and I don't doubt that now. And anyone who doubts that anyone on the board doesn't really wanna be here to serve the district is being unfair. Uh, this is nothing new in education, as you know. Uh, I, as a teacher for many years, I've been approached by parents about X happened or Y happened in a classroom. I'll be happy to be part of that group to evaluate any of those, uh, questions that come up and to discuss it, sit with you, go through it with people from the cabinet, and make a decision about whether we wanna put it in the classroom, or we wanna put it aside for a while, or we wanna say to parent X, "Well, when we teach that unit, we'll be happy to let your child, um, not be part of it if that's what you want," as sometimes that happens in sex education classes.
Yes, and, and to Mr. Schwartz's point, by the way, let me just be clear. This is an eight-year adoption. At any time, we can pull anything from that curriculum, at any time to reevaluate, okay? This isn't censoring, this is pulling it because we had a concern. All right, let's take a look at it. At any time, us as a district, we can actually look at this. At any time, we can make those changes. We can add material if we need it. Just saying, at any time.
So, um, since we've had lots of discussion, and the hour is, uh, getting late, I would like to, uh, make a motion to approve the TCI curriculum and the supplementary materials, uh, for adoption by our district.
Well, Mr. Schwartz.
There needs to be more conversation on this for clarification of the motion and whether or not there's modifications. So, I know it's late.
Excuse me, I'm, excuse me.
I worked for six months on this, so I need to continue to ask some questions. I didn't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry. I just wanted to be sure we had the discussion first.
Yeah, I made a motion, if there's no second, we will have discussion.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the motion, Mr. Schwartz, okay? Because I wrote it. I'm gonna read it.
Well, can we just finish discussion?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
When that time comes, I'm gonna read the motion.
Sure. Okay. So, um, thank you. And, and thank you, Joe. I mean, I appreciate that we're here and we're having this discussion. I am really, really hopeful that we will come to a compromise by the end of tonight. I did wanna ask one quick question because, um, before I go on with my comments, just of Dr. Velez, if I could. Um, so, Dr. Velez, was it ever, um, discussed having the survey results presented at a board meeting? Has that, was that ever on, on the agenda, or like on anyone's mind to put that on the agenda?
Um, it was. It was actually part of a presentation, a very short presentation for the June 27th board meeting. Um, but we were unable to give that presentation because that agenda item was pulled at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. Okay, great. That's good to know. Okay, so, just a few things I wanted to comment about. I appreciate everyone being here tonight, and I know it's really late. But I did wanna say, you know, I really, um, I met with the teachers. I've worked on this for a long time as well. I've read a lot. I learned so much from these curriculum that I read over the last while. It was fantastic. And I, I received lots and lots of emails, and the emails that I did not receive were of any parents from the pilot telling me that we should not adopt this curriculum. I did not receive one of those. Or text, or DM, or all the other ways that people find out how to get ahold of me. I did not receive any messages of those sorts. I did receive several from parents who were in the curriculum. And I just wanted to, just really quickly, a couple of these, of these short, um, emails I received. One person said, "My daughter was part of the pilot program. She enjoyed the curriculum. I worked with her directly on portions of it while we were distance learning due to international travel. It's a fine curriculum, and it's so disheartening to see that no amount of reason or compromise will change the disappointing outcome of the board, a previous board meeting." Another one, um, "I had the opportunity to have my son in a classroom this year that was beyond amazing and helped him grow in more ways than I can count. He was lucky enough to be in a classroom that was piloting, piloting the new social studies curriculum. I saw firsthand how amazing it was and how excited it got the students to learn history. When it came time to review the curriculum, I did not send in any comments because I didn't think it was necessary. I knew that the teachers supported it, and I supported them, and I figured that would be sufficient. Obviously, I was wrong. Since then, I have reviewed the curriculum, as well as many other curriculums suggested by your colleagues. And I, as well as many other parents in our community that I've spoken to, support the original curriculum proposed by the teachers." Uh, another parent discussed that, um, you know, his children in, are in our district, and they said, "It seems a repeated concern brought up, um, to some parents that sexually explicit and inappropriate gender ideology is being discussed in the classroom or by teachers. We have never experienced anything close to that. In fact, the teachers I talk to prefer to avoid uncomfortable subjects better addressed by parents. Um, I watched Tuesday's recording of the board meeting with my older kids, uh, and it unexpectedly fostered a good discussion of what pedophilia is, who Harvey Milk was, and why he was a relevant part of California history, regardless of whether or not I think he was a good person. All that to say, the atmosphere of suspicion of the teachers in our community does not jive with my experience. I trust our teachers and their work to provide a balanced, comprehensive education in support of my role as a father." So, these are just samples of pretty much ninety percent of the emails that I receive. Um, and I try not to live in my own echo chamber. I try to talk to a variety of people. I did talk to the teachers. I've talked to teachers in elementary, middle school, high school. We had our subcommittee meeting. Um, I've talked with the administration. I had some calls with the directors, who were so nice, you know, emailing me on vacation, all kinds of things. Um, and we've spent countless hours on this, and I feel really bad about that. I feel, you know, these poor, this staff, I mean, you guys, the hours that they are putting in, being called at night while they're having dinner with their family, "Get back on your computer and post a new agenda." I mean, it's just, it's heartbreaking what they have had to go through. And at the end of the day, the important thing here, what it boils down to is, it's not about lawsuits, it's not about whose side are we on, it's about these kids. And when we hear that, the excitement and the joy that the kids had learning about social studies, that is the one thing I cannot get out of my head, was listening to the teachers' stories about how the kids loved the curriculum. And I think we can come to a compromise. I, I'm gonna say, Joe, I think it is really, really vital that we do include, um, the supplemental, and here's why. We've heard it tonight. That's the only way that our special ed students and our ELL students are going to get what they need. Now, I have read, it's actually Lesson 12, I believe, not Unit 12. I don't know if we need to change that.
I thought, I thought Lesson--
There's no Lesson 12.
I thought Lesson, Unit, and Chapter were synonymous. Correct me if I'm wrong.
There's, I went through it today, and it's a unit, but it's a lesson, uh, the way it's listed. But whatever, there's no Unit 12, so I'm sure it's fine. It's Lesson 12. So, anyway, Lesson 12, um, is where I understand there is some, um, concern. And so, it's not even, so the section that's of concern is called California's Cultural Contributions. And it's not even, like, the part that's teased, it's called Explore. So, it's kind of like a little extra activity that you can do. It didn't look to me like it was the regular part of the lesson. It was like a little extra. So, in that lesson, there's a couple of sections, talks about, so it's cultural contributions. So, it talks about artists, architects, writers, education, all discussing Californians who made contributions in those areas. And then, um, there is another section called Civil Rights in California, and this is the one that Mr. Gonzalez was really concerned about last time. So, this section has a couple of little headings, and one is called Protests. And in that paragraph, it discusses gay rights in California. One, one paragraph discusses that. And then, under the heading Court Cases, there's two paragraphs that discuss, um, gay marriage, how that came to be legal in California. Other topics in that section talk about segregation, Native American protest at Alcatraz, the push for Asian-American rights, and Martin Luther King. Um, there is no mention of Harvey Milk in this section or in anywhere in the curriculum. So, I am not opposed, as you said, if, if we feel like it's necessary to pull maybe even just that Explore section out, the one that has the concerning language that Mr. Gonzalez brought up for review, that we could see, is that something that, you know, we just let parents know, "Hey, we're gonna teach this. Give us your okay." Maybe teachers aren't even gonna teach it, but we can decide that, like you suggested, Joe, that we pull that section. And then, isn't it possible? So, there's literally, so when you look at it, there's a section called Biographies, and there's hundreds. I read a bunch of them. Pretty interesting, actually. But, um, because they're written at, you know, elementary school level, so they're short.
Yeah, all the supplemental material, by the way, is there, the only thing that would be pulled was that Unit 12. We're not talking about any other supplemental material.
But, but in the, in the agenda item, it says we wouldn't use the supplemental. We wouldn't provide online resources to the students.
Ah, no, I, I, okay.
Okay, so that's not what you meant by it?
Yeah, Mr., uh, Mr. Huff, I'd like you to weigh in that, just because this motion language was, um, formulated, it was my understanding that that one section was gonna be pulled to go to curriculum design team, not all supplemental.
Correct.
So, we would be approving the supplemental?
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and I just wanna make clear that--
Okay, yeah.
That was my motion. Thank you.
All the supplemental is there, except for that Unit 12 that would be pulled so that it could go down to curriculum design team.
Okay.
And perhaps it would be helpful if Dr. Velez weighed in on this, Dr. Komroski, but let's remember, the supplemental material doesn't go to the children. It, it only goes to the teachers, and I think that's part of the discussion as well.
Well, and the question is, that sentence, it says, "We would purchase the program in its entirety, but not provide online resources to students via Clever at this time." So, that's where my question is.
So, Ms. Barkley--
Is what does that mean?
Are you, I'm sorry to interrupt. Are you ask, are you suggesting that, um, the students get the online resources via Clever, except for that particular, um, section at fourth grade?
Yes.
So, and does that include the biographies, or that's, that's just a teacher resource, right? Like, the kids don't get all those biographies on their version?
That's a teacher resource.
Okay, so they don't even get the biographies?
No.
Okay.
They do. The teacher's resource with the bio, I don't know when I'm gonna be able to step in here with Harvey Milk, is in instructional material to be downloaded and given out. So, I, I don't wanna interrupt anyone or stuff on toes, but I wanna weigh in on a couple of things here to clarify.
Okay, so I think--
It's important that we define it appropriately so that it's not another setup where clarification wasn't given in the motion, or however we need to do this.
So, I think, I think what, whatever it is that we're trying to avoid the kids having access to, even if we need to further clarify it, we could put that in the motion and just say, "Except kids aren't gonna get the biographies," or whatever it is. Like, we can be really specific, I think, just so we can move this forward. Because, like, we heard twenty, twenty-four days till school. Yeah, and it's ten-twenty, but also twenty-four days till school. Yeah. Because if that's the compromise, then I think we could do it.
Sorry. Let, let me know when I can speak, and I'll wait.
And one thing, one thing I would like to add, just, is, I did not pilot the information our teachers, our teachers did, as long as our, along with our directors. So, I just wanna declare that kids get everything through the Clever app. So, they get access to the biographies, they get all of that information. So, if we, if we limit the supplemental, kids are not going to get the supplemental, and I think that impacts our ELD and our special education students. However, if, if we are going to be, uh, very clear in the motion tonight, I would be very clear about that fourth grade unit. Um, and then, we will have to work, um, with TCI to figure out how to make that possible at the fourth grade level. That, that is, that is way beyond my tech ability, but we would be able to work with, um, TCI on that.
And has, has TCI promised that? Because from what I've heard in all the research, is that they weren't able to guarantee that, which is why, for me, and looking at other options, is why I hit a pause button, because I think that's important. Um, so I wanna make sure it's not nebulous, and I, I just wanna say one thing about those surveys. If somebody pulled it and that's still super nebulous, that needed to have been brought back at the last workshop. So, I just wanna make sure with people understanding, I care so much about our kids and advocating for our parents, but also transparency and accountability. And that should have been brought back, regardless of somebody pulling it in the past. Having said that, as somebody who is honored to be holding this role as a trustee, I'm willing and wanting to navigate all this. So, just know, you know, I'm thankful, Dr. Komroski, Komroski, for your work on this. Um, but we need to make sure that people understand that kids do get the online biography of Harvey Milk, and it was a teacher edition given to me right at the very end, when I'd wanted it for a long time, where you saw it was a PDF to download, to give out, to have a discussion. So, the fact of it saying it's in supplementary and not really covered is, is inaccurate, if you look at it in its entirety. So I think if we're gonna remove a module, and we're going to pull this through, that needs to be clear right from the get-go. Not, we don't know, not, we'll wait and see. It needs to be that's pulled. Because if we're gonna compromise and work together, and that's important to a lot of people, we need to do it. Now, that doesn't say, and I'm asking this question to whoever can answer it, it, it is not to discriminate. There is great, wonderful people who have great historical content, but not controversial activism. Sally Ride, I've spoken of many times. It'd be wonderful to talk about her a lot. Harvey Milk was in question for a couple of reasons.
Mrs. Wirsma, Mrs. Wirsma.
So that's what I wanna know, is the clarification. So there's not an additional setup where, then on the other end, we're lost again.
Mrs. Wirsma, I'll ask for consensus of the board right now. We pull unit 12 of the fourth grade, we pull the biographies. Do I have consensus?
So we're pulling unit 12 for review.
That's right. If it's found that there, if, if the curriculum design team finds that it's inappropriate, it's not gonna be facing a student.
Right.
It's gonna be on your design team. What does that look like?
Okay.
I said, I volunteered to be on it.
So, so only two?
And that's the thing. So how are you gonna come to consensus? Unless it is that you're gonna pull unit 12, and what I was told is that it could be rewritten, and that we could do what we needed to do, and that we have local jurisdiction to do so.
And it's literally, it's, it's not even unit 12, it's Explore. It's just one.
All right, Mrs. Wirsma, yeah, let, let's lit.
It definitely need to be unit 12, lesson 12. It's Explore, called California's Cultural Contributions. That's, that's where it's all found. Oh, you tell us.
Yeah, Mrs. Wirsma, I'm gonna have Dr. Velez clarify, okay? Thank you, thank you.
Okay, well, I, I kinda put her on the spot, but I have invited Ms. Brown, our Director of Curriculum, or of Assessment and Accountability, who's worked through a lot of this, because there are questions. If we want a very clear motion tonight, I think that Ms. Brown can clear up some of the questions in terms of the online curriculum, the supplemental, the biographies through Clever, correct? Okay. You might not be.
Hello?
Okay, all right. And so that information is available to students through the Clever app.
So typically, when content is pushed through Clever, a student will be assigned the textbook in Clever. So they have a digital version, and they have a hard version. And they, this is like typically how our adoptions have been done in the past. And so when they get the digital version, it is very much like a carbon copy of what's printed right there in front of them. The teacher has access to a student version of the curriculum, a TE, or the Teacher Edition of the curriculum, and all the supplemental resources. Typically, with an adoption, there is an astronomical amount of supplemental resources for teachers to have at their disposal, for the variety of reasons that you heard here in the audience tonight. For differentiation for our students, particularly our special education students, our EL students, and students who just learn differently in the classroom. And that's the beauty of differentiation. And so the teacher then would vet the supplemental curriculum and assign the supplemental curriculum typically as an assignment. So this was done a lot during the online time in TVUSD. And so teachers might assign a reading passage at one level to one group of students, at another level to another group of students. And that's the beauty of some of the supplemental curriculum that is offered, is everybody is learning the same topic and the same content, but at the student's level. Did I answer the question appropriately?
I think you did. Are there any questions from board members in regards to that? She is more of an expert in that than me.
I think the other thing, just to clarify Dr. Komroski's point about a mechanism for parental concerns. I think there, we have procedures and policies embedded in what we do currently. And I do think that we could very easily embed a mechanism for parent concerns and address those parent concerns through a procedure that we already have through our curriculum design teams that meet on a regular basis. And this is a curriculum design team, I don't wanna step on Mrs. Parra's toes, that's gonna be meeting on a regular basis anyways, to get our UPOs up and running for teachers to have this school year anyways.
Okay, now on a curriculum design team, is that like a subcommittee where two board members can be a part of that, or not? How does that work?
So curri, typically, a curriculum design committee is comprised of teachers led by the directors. Now, I will say that there is opportunity for board members to be observers in that process, which is kind of what you had all selected earlier in your, in your tenure, to be able to be part of that, to observe that process, so to speak. So typically, curriculum design committees are comprised only of teachers led by the directors, but we have allowed, I know, this, this last year during the pilot, I know Ms. Wirsma was able to kinda join in on one of those and have conversations with some teachers. So it, it is a process that is completely open and transparent, so there would always be an open door for board members to participate.
All right. So I, I'd be the first to sign up for that, and, you know? Yeah, Mr. Schwartz, Mrs. Wirsma, are you interested? There's oversight.
I, I still don't understand. I, I would be interested, but I, I still don't understand how that correlates to what you mentioned in passing a specific motion about a module. With all the verbiage, it, it's lost in the minutia.
So it's just still his original motion.
Been heard, so I feel like at this point, it just needs to be clarified with what we're doing. I feel like you mentioned an option, and now it's being pushed off, so that we don't know what it looks like.
No, no, okay, I'll clarify.
So the question needs to be clarified with the aspect of pulling it, and that we have that local jurisdiction to do something differently with it.
All right, Mr., Mr. Huff?
Isn't that what you proposed?
Yeah, Mr. Huff? Okay, it was my understanding that the supplemental material would be there, that satisfied sped, you know, all the other parameters, that, that extremely helpful, like, we need that. It was just my understanding that all of that's in, except for the unit 12, that would go to the Curriculum Design Team. Now, Mrs. Barclay said the wording was a little off, and I, and I'm trying to find out. It's late, I'm, I'm trying to find it. What's that?
I was trying to get logged in, but I think it's fine.
But that was my understanding, when I had you design that language, that's all that's being pulled is unit 12. The rest is, all those resources are still there on supplemental. If that clears up the question for you, Mrs. Wirsma, that, that, that was supposed to be clear. Those are the resources.
But is it being pulled to be pulled, so that we can rewrite it? That's, that is what information I was given.
Jen, it's, it's written on the.
It changes the trajectory, not that we have, people decide to push it off, and then we're gonna keep it, because at the end of the day.
It's on the topic sheet.
Let me.
It's written on the topic sheet. Under Recommended Motion, Jen, if you read that, it says, "The interim superintendent is directed to implement this new curriculum by placing unit 12 of fourth grade materials at the end of the scope and sequence of 2023-24 instructional year. The interim superintendent is further directed to work with the curriculum design team to review unit 12 of the fourth grade materials, and recommend substituted age-appropriate curriculum that meets all state and federal standards, including the Fair Act, but is also consistent with the board's commitment to exclude sexualized topics of instruction from elementary school grade levels." So basically, you push it to the end of scope and sequence, so we have time, and then the curriculum committee looks at it and decides if things need to be changed in it before it's delivered to the kids.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Are there any parents involved in this, or is it just teachers, once again?
No, parents.
Are we, are we with the same group, or do we have?
Mr., Mr., Mr. Huff, I'd like you to weigh in on this.
Yeah, I would, I would say that once there is a recommendation that new instructional materials, new curriculum, be selected to replace another curriculum, that parents be involved, as well as the, it first starts with the teachers, that's the mandate by the legislature. And then the legislature also encourages you to involve the parents and the community. That's again, six zero zero two. So you would go through that same process, but it has to start with the teachers.
Right.
And I would say, to add on to that, to Mr. Huff, I do think that the subcommittee work that's happening, that was reported out earlier this week at the Board Workshop, clearly outlined the work that's being done collaboratively with some of our board members, as well as our directors and Ms. Dais, to be able to have clear, defined ways for parental input, parental overview, and transparency to parents. So I think that coincides with that as well.
And, and would you understand that at this point, because the process has been so flawed and not transparent, it's hard for me to have full faith and trust in this, that this is the way it's gonna go? So, Dr. Velez, I would like your commitment, you know, and your word, that we will do what we need to do, especially in reference to the items of controversy that we've talked about, that it's not pushed out and set up on some other end to get lost in the verbiage. Because we owe that to the parents and this community. And I think it's important to collaborate, it's important to start healing. It's also important to protect the kids and pull Harvey Milk from all material, in addition to mentions of controversial groups like the.
So my only other question would be, oh, sorry, did you wanna respond, Dr. Velez?
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good?
I was trying, I was trying to grasp the name. That's what we need to commit to. And then however we need to supplement it with other people, individuals, I think that's something to meet through, but we have to be so clear here, transparently, and then make it happen.
Can we move on?
So if it is the motion of the board, that is this motion or a motion that's similar, I have a directive from the collective board, and just for the record, my integrity, I will absolutely do what I am asked to do by this motion, so.
We appreciate that.
Just a quick, just one quick thing, and, and maybe Mr. Huff can answer this. So, because it isn't part of the motion, but it is part of the topic sheet, where it said that we're not gonna provide online resources to students on Clever, but that's really not what we talked about here, and it's not in the motion. Is it a problem that it's on the topic sheet like that?
No, it's the motion itself that controls the board action.
Okay, so we're good.
And.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna read off, I'm gonna read off this motion then. "I call for a motion in a second to approve the Social Studies Alive as elementary social science curriculum for grades one through five. The interim superintendent is directed to implement this new curriculum by placing unit 12 of the fourth grade materials at the end of the scope and sequence of the 2023-24 instructional year. The interim superintendent is further directed to work with the curriculum design team to review unit 12 of the fourth grade materials and recommend substituted age-appropriate curriculum that meets all state and federal standards, including the Fair Act. But this is also consistent with the board's commitment to exclude sexualized topics of instruction from the elementary school grade levels. Do I have a motion in a second?"
Yeah, I, I just wanna make sure we included the supplementary materials in our motion, which I made before.
No, that goes without saying, that's why I had Mr. Huff on. The supplemental materials are in there, the only thing being pulled is unit 12, fourth grade.
Second.
Okay, second. So I made the motion, Schwartz seconded it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, this is, this is very important. Thank you. This is very important that the district hear this, okay? Uh, you're right, you're right. You know what, you know what, I'm sorry, thank you. I'm sorry. You know what, I'm, thank you, thank you. What I wanna say is, I know, you know what? Oh, my gosh! Oh, my gosh! All right, I would, I would like to, I would like to, to ask consensus from the board. This is very important now. I would like to ask consensus from the board if we can direct the superintendent to refuse shipping and receiving from the governor's office, and here's why. We have an L cap budget, we know how to, we know how to pay for our own books and our own curriculum at TVUSD. We do not need the governor to get involved. I simply want to refuse that shipment. Do I have consensus from the board?
I mean, I don't.
I have, no, no, I can, I can call for this right now.
I, I. If you turn it down, and it doesn't show up for us, then we have nothing.
We have, uh, uh, okay. For clarification, we can get, we can get the books to avoid Williams Act, and we can get the curriculum in time. Is this correct, Dr. Velez?
Okay, so Monday morning, I, I know Ms. Mayor will be waiting for this order. She is ready to push send. It is, as I have said before, in any curriculum, we have no control over the publisher in terms of when those items will be received. But I also know that TCI is waiting with bated breath to see how this is going to happen. Our hope is that we will get them in time, but we are ready to hit send Monday morning. I cannot guarantee anything, 'cause I am not part of the publishing company. We will do everything in our power to facilitate getting them here on time. I also will make the commitment that we will make sure that our staff at the school sites and our staff at the district office, who need to process this information, or all of these textbooks, that is a lot of work, that they are, that they are compensated appropriately, and that we will get this curriculum in place.
All right, so, so, so to be clear, we do not need Governor Newsom to send books, right?
Well, I, I am not gonna speak for Governor Newsom, but what I can say is that we will be able to place the order Monday morning.
Okay, so then let me, let me finish. We have, I have two, I have two people, me and Mrs. Wirsma, to give consensus to direct not receiving anything from shipping and receiving. What are the other two members?
Let me just, let me just.
Please.
I believe that I can confirm the governor will not be sending books, so I don't think that that's necessary.
Okay, so we don't have consensus, okay?
I just don't think it's necessary. I don't think it's necessary. I think he's waiting. In fact, I know that they're watching the meeting tonight. And so I feel like now that we've made.
Join us, we don't need it.
Well, no, he's not sending them, so we don't need to, we don't need to reject them. So I think we're okay. I think we're fine.
I think so.
Okay, so, how about this, everybody? I am, I am so glad I did not have to yellow or red card anybody tonight, but I got red carded by two. Thank you. The next, the next regular, oh, board comments.
We get board comments.
Excuse me, board comments. Mrs. Wirsma, since you're on Zoom, would you like to go first?
Um, sure. You know, I think this whole process has been so difficult, and yet I'm very hopeful that at the end of the day, we'll all walk away and know that we each fought for what we believed in. And parents out there listening, I want you to know how much I love and respect you, and went to the mat endlessly with all of this for months. And I know teachers have worked hard. I, I think to some degree, you need to understand, we were boxed in from the governor down to the state superintendent, to the county of Ed in Riverside. It did happen that way. And, you know, at the end of the day, you have to weigh everything when it comes to those items, and I know that we're gonna continue to advocate for those things that we feel really importantly tasked to do as trustees. And, you know, I think it, I think there's been some grandstanding tonight and disingenuous gaslighting, and let's get past that. I think that that's really important. I would love to see our teachers, you know, like, let's, let, let's work together and, and honestly get past the kind of crazy that went on in the communities, so that parents aren't getting that mixed messaging. I, I would love to take that positive aspect and say, you know what? We heard our board, and what was important, and we're gonna make it applicable as we continue to work with these materials. I think that'll go a long way, if there's that respect and full faith that goes both ways. So I just wanna thank everyone for hanging in with this. I, it, it wasn't my first choice to go this direction, and I think that's been made clear. But I'm gonna be that person who continues to govern, and with that attitude of respect and understanding that we can row through this. And I see great things for the district as we move forward for parental rights and other aspects of what we hope to accomplish. So let's do it together, and thank you for the time and giving of your Friday night.
Thanks, Mrs. Wirsma. Okay, Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah, I just wanna say thanks to everybody who was in this process. From the beginning, I respected the opinion of our teachers, I still do. To those parents who don't really know what's in this curriculum, I urge you, go into your child's school, get a copy of the book, look through it. If you find something you don't like, if you find something you don't like, email me, and I will be happy to sit down with you and talk about it. Let's try to work for the best interest of our students. And please, if you're gonna accuse, Mrs. Wirsma, I'm sorry, if you're gonna accuse people of gaslighting, then please mention their names. Don't throw that out there, it's really improper.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Mrs. Barclay?
Thank you. I am just really happy that we were able to work together to come to a compromise. I, I just wanna say that I, I don't believe that what has happened over the past few weeks was necessary. I think we could've made this happen so much earlier. We could've been so much more ready for school to start. And it's a little unfortunate that it, it had to go this far. And, you know, it is, it, the governor was not trying to send us a book that we didn't already approve. It was the book the teachers wanted, it was the book that the parents wanted. So I think that it's in the best interest of the kids to get books in their hands, and however, that was gonna have to happen, unfortunately. But luckily, we were able to come together tonight, and, and I, you know, I am also an advocate for parents' rights. I am a parent. I've been an involved parent, and I really, once again, encourage parents to get involved. And, and can we do better about reaching out to parents and getting them involved? Sure. We're never done with that work. We always want to find more and better ways to get parents involved. I, I really believe that, and I hope we can continue to do that. And I do hope our community comes together. You know, for the record, for, for the people who think they need to, you know, harass me in my workplace, I am not and do not ever support pedophilia or pornography. If you know me in any capacity, it's laughable. And this community who feels it necessary to, to harass us as board members when we are just trying to do a good job and care for our students, it's not necessary. If you have something to say, say it to my face. I'm happy, I'm happy to talk to you, I'm happy to meet with you, I'm happy to let you get to know me as a person, because.
You guys, we're almost done with the meeting. Don't make me pull out a card and, and tell you leave, please.
There's, there's nothing I want more than the kids in our schools to learn and to stay alive. And I'm happy that we are moving towards that, and I appreciate all of our board members who have worked together to make this happen tonight, and all of you for coming and for your support. Thank you.
Thanks, I, you know, I, sorry, Mr. Schwartz, this is Sabbath, I should have known that. I conducted the meeting because I thought it was emergent, we have to get, you know, curriculum. I'll just bring it down to the basics for me, practically, when I left the door a couple days ago from my house, I literally was thinking, everybody in my cul-de-sac, those kids go to Paloma Elementary, they will, they do not have a current curriculum, now they do. So, thank you. Thank, thank you, teachers, for hanging in there, thank you, parents. It's not, it's not perfect, but we're moving on, we have curriculum. I had a long-winded speech, thanks for the ovation, the standing ovations, sorry, I'm tired. So I won't go long-winded, I just thank you for all coming out. Thank you. And I like to thank the district for helping us with the subcommittees, because me and Mr. Gonzalez, and, and Mrs. Barclay, and Mrs. Wirsma really dug down deep, because we took this seriously. It took a little while, it took a little while longer, and I know it was uncomfortable, but we moved through it. Thank you.
So I'm actually, right now, full of joy for our students. I'm, I'm thankful for the work that has been put in by our teachers, our district administration, and I will say, the work being put in by our board, because I don't think people realize sometimes how much work is going on behind the scenes, and how much truly our board members have been in subcommittees and have been working through this process. The process has not been easy, and I think that it has been on public display how easy, how difficult it has been, but this is a step forward, this is a path forward for our students, and I think there's always growth in the process, and so I am hopeful this is a pivotal point for all of us to come together to continue, because all of us believe in our students, we're all here for kids, but we're, this is a pivotal point for us to continue to move forward on that path. But there are eight thousand, I'm sorry, it's eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-three first through first, first through fifth graders that are showing up to school on August fourteenth, who will have a viable curriculum, and I am thankful to all of our board members, and Mr. Gonzalez, I wish you could be here for this, I am thankful to that, so a special thanks to our board, a thanks to our teachers, and so many of you have been at every single board meeting, I am thankful for you for your commitment on a Friday night at ten forty-five, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, announce the meaning of the next meeting, the next regular open session business meeting in the governing board of education is scheduled for August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. The meeting, this meeting adjourned Tuesday, July twenty-first, yeah, I'm getting there, okay.